I think that I think it's all the open tag is like we use under the tag list. You know, that's the whole value of the last year. And you have seriously.
Good, this is a new question.
Uh, I'm not for sure.
It's gonna go quicker than Friday. Alright, so officially you're using the board.
Oh, okay, that's what I asked.
Yes, that's why I disappeared to go ask what the heck. No, no, because morning means that we're going to be here longer and five o'clock isn't coming as fast.
The meeting started early and.
And I'm late, yeah, that's, that, that is not good.
It's Friday, it's your class, I'm down here in my office.
Yes, that's more than we should say something. Listen, I have friends who are police officers, she's like freak out if I say something about their shift. And use the Q word in that comment. See, I'm not even doing it because Jim is in here, I don't want to screw up the chase. Because I know better.
I got a picture from the cabin a while ago with a woodchuck in the front yard. The last time we had a woodchuck in the front yard, it threw it into the outhouse and my wife was gonna pack the whole full of leaves and pine cones and was gonna burn it.
Burn the, burn the.
Well, the hole out behind it, well, flaky behind it, there was a hole where it was getting in and out. She was just gonna light a little fire on it.
Okay.
And, uh, she says, I ought to put a dribble of gas on there. So I'm on my way to Menards and I found the way out, I said, no gas. Uh, she says, it was only two drops and she, she touched it off. And almost blew up my outhouse. It backfired into the outhouse pit, blew the lid open on the, blew the door open.
Oh, my God.
Smoke rolling out of the outhouse.
And the woodchuck is sitting here laughing his ass off.
Woodchuck was in the front yard.
Laughing.
It wasn't even in.
He was laughing.
Yeah, so now we have another one.
Because the first one, he said this is highly entertaining.
I got that one wrong. There was something about a, a nest ruffling underneath her that bothered her, having a, a very large rodent.
So, I, I can understand that.
Yeah, so I, I got it the next day and.
My, my parents and I went to go visit my brother in Dayton many years ago. And I called my parents to let them know I got home and my dad answered, I really pissed. I'm like, now what have I done? He said, no, 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 they came home, they had sweet potato ivy growing in their whiskey barrels.
Yep, we have some elsewhere.
Yes, well, the woodchuck had a great time chewing on them. He devoured them. So dad found the hole under the deck and flooded it. Fifteen minutes later, mom comes and finds him and says, there is a soaking wet woodchuck. So dad goes.
They actually have a raised platform for flooding in their hole.
So dad, he was, he grabs those chains with the dancing off the deck. I was just looking at his whole turn and snore, but dad, he gets it all force in the face. I'm like, I am not taking you people to the hospital for rape and shot.
Yeah.
We got the line, yeah. If we don't have the forum, sorry. Not wanna talk yet.
Hi, Paul.
Were they able to drag Bill off the golf course? Were they able to drag, how were they able to drag you off the golf course?
Bill's a bigger sail than me. He plays more often, uh, nearly every day except for his wife's condition now, so. But they keep homebound more than what.
Ah.
That'll happen, just was just there myself. Month or so ago.
I did not see market at the ribbon cutting yesterday for five legs. Brendan, we had a huge crowd.
Did you really?
Oh, my God, I think this is one of the bigger ribbon cuttings I've ever photographed and I had to go to Brent and said, there, there may, you may have a profit, I can just say or no. Depending on the picture, you may be cut off, maybe like that's fine. I said, I figured it would be okay, but I just wanted to give you a warning.
We had to stand up on the booth.
On the front piece of a booth to get back far enough to get the picture.
Wow.
Cause we had three people lined up in front of the counter and then our staff people were up on the counter behind them.
What, what time was it?
Eleven o'clock. Name is Doc.
He said something to me about it, but I don't know.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Well, and yourself? I can share it. I do. I absolutely do.
Are you finding a pen that works?
Yeah.
She's about to cheat. Oh, yeah, she's behind us and I told her.
I didn't know.
So, I figured out we got.
Without rocket science, I was, this is one more thing for me to.
She thinks it's the end. I saw what I was.
Yeah. I'm not gonna drive him into the door. I've seen it before. I would be like, how am I being? I would like to. Oh, gotcha. I'm sure he's right. Oh, okay. Yeah. 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 My cherry bird. Oh, I see, you know, the restaurant. I have to say, I thought. I guess. Oh, okay. And where that wild thing at? Well, it's right next to. Okay, yeah. Where, where it'd be more.
You might have to.
Thank you. Whatever they call it. From three years. Yeah. Trying to get rid of it and make all this. Oh. We have a. So. I still. I mean, I just. So. You mean, I just. So. We have to. I called. Oh, probably. Enough for. You have an extra couple of days. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't know. Now, if you put that for nine o'clock, come on. I think. 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 Yeah. We're still gonna go. Oh, no, I'll take you up at like five. Well, it's not a good idea. Yeah, it's, it's okay, I'm not, I'm not. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I do sit there going, oh, yeah, tell me you're. That's why, yeah, that's. I hope. Yeah. I just. I just. Something and I'm like, okay, I'm just kind of looking for something, but I have. I hope, yeah, okay. They have a little, the footage. I think it was coming off the tears. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So these types of pictures, you know, like. I don't know. 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 Although the footage, which I have. On me. I don't know. This is for. I don't know. 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 Yeah, yeah. Yeah. This is number? Hmm? No, no, it's the. The. No, not the bottom, because it's got the. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the only thing I thought. Yeah, see where everyone. Yeah, I think it was. I don't think. No, because. Yeah. And we. Yeah, but I, I just like I said, that's. I think. Yeah. 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 Mm-hmm. That's what it says on. It's. It is a small one. It's been all along. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. That's. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. So, it was a great part of the. Yeah. 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 Right. Oh, dang it. I don't. I don't remember. But I, I guess. When I did this, because. It was all good. It was all good. Yeah. So, I, I don't. Yeah. 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 Mm-hmm. Thank you. Yeah. 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 Well. Yeah. And something. Yeah. I bet you know that today somebody might have some trouble. Yep, for the guy.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
What I called me to order. Let me give you the like, of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you bring anything up on the TV?
I can't do.
These are the. I have that on. Everybody's gonna have it on for the mother. All the ordinance before the victory, or called out. Specific sections that I think did have that forever. Okay, the first one.
Uh, ordinance update.
So, start with that, we'll go through. This ordinance list that we got, reminding that. It's like we need a sanction based on the part that we have that we have a month ago. Call it. They can throw that one, dude.
Okay, the first one that came up was one day fifteen, um, this is general penalty. And so essentially it was item C. And basically. Under item B, I'm sorry, not C. Um, there's the minimum fine of fifteen dollars and not more than two thousand five hundred dollars, is what's currently imposed, um. Like, a lot of these ordinances were written decades ago, um. So we're just, you know, the recommendation was perhaps raising the minimum up to fifty dollars for fifteen dollars. That was, that was another recommendation on that.
And they just normally apply as if, as if there aren't other ordinances with.
With their own.
With their own.
Correct, correct.
The other side of that, I think, was some of the concern, we talked about that twenty-five hundred, depending on what the issue is, may not be. With having a ceiling on it like that, it could be. Accessible to somebody to continue to violate. And it might not be.
Does that prove?
In our best interest.
Does it reach twenty, is it per incident or total?
The very, number C, or letter C, is each day that code violates and commits or permitted to continue, constitute a separate event.
So each event?
Each event, or each day.
So it would, it could be more than twenty-five hundred with that.
Correct.
What's, what's. Okay, so you're saying that if it's a separate, if every day constitutes a separate, the max per day would be ten thousand five hundred.
Do we need to? Make the changes on each one of these at the time, or are we gonna improve at the end, or how, what are we? How are we making changes?
I thought we just did it at the end. Change, does that work?
With the.
Well, I. I, I kind of the way it's described to me, well, I'm not sure we all understand, which is the work section go through and make, but you don't have to make a decision, and today anyway. That's what I understood.
That way we can have.
That way, so have it. And have a whole list of things. Which I thought I would do. That's right, the idea was, okay, what do we want, and then, so I've got an idea what to draft, and then I would draft something, which, uh, frankly, when I'm thinking about doing it, when I originally got these deals from you a couple times. I may do that in two or three ordinances, just like for a couple chapters, here are the changes in these chapters, and I have the changes in these chapters, just to make it easier to digest, you went through it.
Okay.
So we're just gonna make the, we're gonna make the recommendations, so we can draft what it needs. So that's really the intent today, so. We're at one fifteen, which is the first one on the ordinance.
We're actually done with that.
Well, yeah, I mean, we talked about raising the minimum fine from fifteen dollars to fifty dollars. Um, general penalty. Which I think fifteen is not sufficient, um, to be perclusive, so. That was what we talked about as a group, where.
I, I think it sounds, and I think most of the. Ordinances have their own penalties anyway, so this is kind of a catchall, so I understand. I'm fine with the fifty.
Yes, I am too.
Are we on that one?
Yep.
Okay, the next one is. So this one's brought up, this is has to do with the, uh, police commission, um, the question is just raised, do they need to meet four times a year unless it's currently in ordinance? Jim looked at that, that's the exact requirement for that, that's kind of the way we have. It was organized when we were.
That works for Jim?
Yeah, that, that works for me.
That's new, that one evidence?
Yeah.
Next one is two forty-one, um, building commissioner, we don't have a building commissioner, I don't know if we've ever had a building commissioner, we have a public work director, an employee. But I don't know if that, that ordinance needs to be adjusted to reflect, correct today to that position.
Do you recommend me?
I am.
Well, if we don't have a commissioner, then we should.
So the building inspector does all the duties that are charged to the building commissioner, but the building commissioner is appointed position, the council, not employee.
He's not a city employee.
The building inspector gives an employee, the building commissioner is appointed by the council, so. It's inside of the year, we haven't had building commissioner, but it's been building inspector, and I think for twenty years, it was a building inspector, which was out. Um, so we didn't have a building commissioner, but I remember our order.
Well, under the, under the state unsafe building law, there are actually two different positions. Uh, one of which is inspector, who is the entity, uh, or person who inspect and brings citations for unsafe buildings, building commissioners like Jeff. And, um, so that. The terminology has gotten confused, or this will be the first hour of it confused, okay, which person has which role and which title are we having? But, uh, I would probably suggest, uh, keeping the position named there, but maybe changing the language to make. That that person's role is that which is defined to them under the unsafe building law.
And there is deeper into the, of the ordinances, there's, uh. Requirements to that hearing for any building that's been downed, anything like that, and under that ordinance, it's the town manager, it's the judge of that hearing. So if you want to continue it that way.
Yeah. I, I would recommend that you keep, uh, you follow the state. Parallel and make that building commissioner be somebody separate. That way, you're not in a position of having to judge, uh, the work of what a building inspector has done, or at least there's some, uh, uh, independence where that, that you're not tied in with that building inspector position particularly, the building commissioner can be in.
Okay, so.
Is this an apartment we make annually then? So each year we have to hear annually?
Correct.
But it's never been that. I hear where. Here, or recall those?
No, and I don't call it that, I mean, because I've been here and I don't take any actions under the unsafe building law, so.
So I guess the word you're putting is that we raise this section to be clear, as you advise, all of side of the unsafe building law. To change to the commissioner.
Yeah.
On the, on the, from the town manager.
They just give you that difference, being the building commissioner, that was somebody. And of course, you're all, what you're always concerned about is the appearance of the person who's being cited, right? Which is they want to make sure they get a fair shake on the unsafe building.
Does this change in any way the way you say?
No, if I'm not wrong, the inspector is just an employee that does inspect.
Okay, I mean, I.
Someone who goes to the building commissioner for judgment.
We don't have one.
Well, we don't know. If you change it.
Do you have compensations for building commissioners?
If you switch.
I don't think, they never had an ordinance that we have talked about it.
Yeah. I don't think so, most, most towns that are of, uh, besides Syracuse, they, I mean, they've grabbed some people who are volunteered to, to provide that service, should it ever arise? Because if you have somebody that's really getting. You know, if somebody's having to sit for six, uh, days appearing to you, you've got a bigger set of problems than gee, we don't get paid this guy. Because that would be a really exceptional volume of work. Uh, you know, a town, besides Syracuse, if you had a hearing every three years, that would be a surprise.
My, my question was, does it change the manner in which he's paid, does he still get the same pay, but he's not a city employee, but now he's a commissioner?
He's a commissioner and he's not paid by anything because he's not the building inspector. There is no right now commissioner, if commissioner does not be. Yeah, so the answer is no, then it changes where they get paid, because he's getting paid nothing now, and if we change it, he gets paid nothing.
The building inspector.
The building inspector will get paid, but not the building commissioner, different.
So which one makes it more clear?
Well, if we have to have it, and then our ordinance provides that you're in the commissioner.
If you're gonna take advantage of the unsafe, the state unsafe building law, you have to jump through that, you have to have a building.
Can you go commissioner slash? Inspector?
No, you make the inspector become a different, because the inspectors like the prosecutor, the commissioners like the judge.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, so you gotta have two different people doing those jobs in the unsafe building law.
Anyway, it sounds to me like what we want to do is, as you did, keep it. Clarify it with the role.
Yeah.
And then I'll create the separation.
Yeah, I think so.
Moving on, Dave.
So, on the page screen, the organizational chart just needs to be redone, and I can take care of that, if you guys. Have no objection.
Yeah. So then, what, well.
Yeah, what needs to be changed?
What needs to be changed?
Um, we don't have public works director on there, the volunteer department is no longer under, uh, we don't have a street superintendent, we have a street department. So, um, there's just some things on there, the building commissioner, obviously, that's kind of static, but. There's a couple things that need to be added in there.
Dave will draft that, and we'll have that to look at for.
So, two fifty-one is reimbursement for flight traveling, if you're not a home vehicle, um. This was, last updated in ninety-nine, and it was thirty-two point five cents per mile, we currently use the IR standard, so we need to rework the language, it says that we're immersed, based on IR standards, is that correct?
I mean, do we have to say the amount, can we just say?
Yeah, we just say IR standard, yeah, so that moves on.
Except we keep it from being changed regularly.
Makes sense.
All right, who's on?
Um, there was some question about whether this number, two fifty-two, nepotism and complex measures was adequate, um, um, data discussion, I didn't see anything in there that was lacking, but I don't know if you guys answered earlier, or if there is. No, I mean, the state reached some. I mean, the state has adopted kind of minimum standards and treatment for that, and essentially, no, probably not always, but essentially, it's adopted the state standards. Like, like the ordinance said, you can be more stringent if you wish to have more, uh. If there's a reason to have a more restrictive policy than the state has provided you. I don't know that they're.
Well, the only thing that I see that's in there, and what I read and what is in there, the broad language is, I think, is pretty comprehensive, pretty from what the state's requirements are, but I think that, being a small town, we have. Things that may not be contracts, therefore relating to the conflict of interest that's written in that statute, but it's an obvious conflict of interest, like voting on a property that you personally own, or something under half of something that you own that is not necessarily contractually bound, but is clearly, that outcome would be a conflict. I don't know if we need to get that specific, or how we address that.
The design of the section was to deal with nepotism policy, I know it said nepotism and conflicts of interest. But I think it was designed to say that nep, that nepotism, when you have your, your higher relatives, create conflicts of interest. I don't think it was designed to be a comprehensive conflict of interest policy to define exactly what is a conflict of interest. Um, I suspect there are probably policies out there for a community to do that, I'm not spending time researching it. Um, but I don't think this needs to be changed, but if you are concerned about having a more comprehensive conflict of interest policy, uh, yeah, then I think you tell me, go out, see what you find a few, um, that would make you feel comfortable about it. I, I would not be comfortable drafting one without looking at other things that have been done already.
I think it's, we don't do anything beyond what's been done out there, but it could be worthwhile to understand what is normal and customary in other places.
For the time being, only this one.
Well, that's what I understood when I read it at the beginning, was that it was less comprehensive on the conflict of interest portion of it, like you clarified, it's more directed towards the nepotism policy, not, not really even a conflict of interest piece. But my question is, we need, we need something covering that that's more extended, but maybe not because of the state statute.
Yeah, and of course, there are a lot of, I, I suspect that most folks don't have, or don't try to create a conflict of interest policy because of the, um. Nature of the kind of that specific situation.
Yeah.
Uh, for example, you, you mentioned the okay voting. For example, you, you mentioned that okay, voting on something that you own, you know, ownership of your property. If one piece of property is being affected by a town, potential town ordinance, and one person in the council owns that piece of property, that's one thing. If you have three hundred parcels in town that might all be affected by effects of passing to your ordinance, um, and that's probably not the same conflict of interest kind of scenario.
Well, my concern is, is that the public in general, it would be things we don't understand, kind of, where the lines of demarcation are, in a certain way, that we can clear that so people understand better, that would be beneficial, because it's more complex. And I believe it would be.
Yeah.
Um, because most of it seems like to me that the terms are relevant under the contract, that is, has had a dispute, but it's not simply just, I own that property and I want the sidewalk there, because it's a danger, but I'm not going to hold on to it, because it goes across my property and four others. So I might just be more of an issue, I think, in an actual ordinance.
Well, I'll look and see if what, if there have been municipalities, at least in Indiana, that have drawn their, uh, their own, uh, policies, that I can share, or if you can decide, okay, you want to go from that.
I would say that, I mean, all the years I've been on the town council, until maybe the last couple of years, I don't recall there being what I considered to be a conflict, or could be a conflict. I think, I think we always have to look at, even if it's not necessarily legally a conflict, if there's an appearance of a conflict, that should be, that should be enough, but I have not seen, again, we've had your and Larry's issues, and I don't remember having any issues before that were affected personal, that council member personally.
I'll need to look at that, I think I'm helpful, maybe there's actually been taken in or not.
Sure.
Two sixty-five.
Okay, so the next several are, are cumulative funds, so these are active funds, as there are people, property tax rules. So this, uh, basically, do you want to update or change the amount of the tax, or basically what you can change, suggest, or talk, you know, or first question, because all the changes in S P one, and we don't know, I mean, there's some locally controlled taxes that are not under that, you know, all of that umbrella.
Do we have to put in the amount in this?
Well, it'll, it'll say as it is unless you change it.
Yeah, well, I, I realize it did say twenty-oh.
Yeah, so like cumulative fund is sitting at point zero zero eight-five, you can legally raise this to point zero one six-seven. Same with human, human capital improvement, which is two sixty-six, um, it's currently at point zero one one four, we raise to point three-three. Human, human capital development fund is currently at point zero one five-two, and we raise the size of point zero five. So those are the ones that you have local control.
I would say if, if we're going to keep them with numbers in these sections, that we go with whatever the maximum that we can, I mean, we can always make this decision, we don't have to go with that, correct? That's just the maximum.
Anywhere between where you're at and where you're.
It seemed like we ought to stay permanent, in my opinion, with those one, two, three, three sections that you're.
Is there, have you spent any time, you're a virgin, have you spent any time looking at what the future over the next couple of years is, and what our needs might be, the values, and what those figures might be?
I mean, I'm, I'm forecasting out to three twenty-seven, which is a last year, a five year plan. So currently, we're okay, it's part of the intel, but, um, actually, twenty-seven is when we're going to start seeing effects of S P one really heavy, so I don't know if it's comfortable enough.
And I will say that back before the fire territory was established, that was one of the reasons that we hoped that we had to go to the fire territory, because the tax rates and so forth had not been kept up to date, and therefore, there was no way to accomplish buying what we need to buy and all that sort of stuff.
Well, that'd be my concern, is that we haven't kept up to that, the inflation that we've seen with the tiered old, with the capital, with them, that we wouldn't be able to catch back up, if we wait till down the road, we could have a severe problem, and you look at the difference between this, this human capital fund, and where we're at, what it could be is.
They're all very, they're all very significant, and I.
But I would like to understand clearly what, you know, what we should be doing to make sure that we're ahead.
Yeah.
Be proactive, rather.
You're guessing game right now, for everybody.
I mean, what would be, I mean, as you said, we don't have to take that as next year's rate, or whatever, whatever we, that that would allow us to do that.
Well, we, we need to decide what it is in ordinance, right? That's what it is.
Right, correct. I, I thought it said can't be, oh, okay, I just wanted, can't be, yes, otherwise, the state works it out, until you.
Whatever we say here, what's going to work, or whatever we tell.
Okay.
What I don't want to do, I mean, clearly, I don't want to pay any more taxes than anybody else, but also don't want to have to cut services because we're being short sighted, so I don't know if we need to get with your Meggins, or whoever down there, so.
That would be my.
What's the ramifications? What's the ramifications, aren't what our future needs are, and, you know, maybe we need to, if we only have one more year left on a five-year plan, we need to look five, six years out and say, with this new legislation, what is that going to do to what we've got? Because if I could tell you right now, wait to do it down the road, with the changes that I'm hearing, it could be too late, too complicated.
So the savings that is.
You'll be second to get with them and get things. Hopefully.
I was wondering what the ramifications were to, I didn't know.
Nobody knows.
Yeah. Well, I would think it would take very little research on this part to come up with a plan.
You can make estimations, like everybody else is trying to estimate.
Well, I don't want, we have clarity to make a decision on this, because we always turn it back later, but in order to make up what we don't have, it's just not a good option for us, especially if we're on a train state.
And then two sixty-eight, the building fund, we should not have one. Um, so I don't, we've grabbed some what it is back in nineteen-two or three, but I don't think that works, but I think you're not correct. You want to delete that one, or is that something that you can also add to the cumulative fund?
What would that, what would that be?
I had a research CD plan, do you have a, if, under this, it was set at twenty-five cents.
I'm sorry, Dave, which one is it?
Uh, two sixty-eight.
Two sixty-four.
Uh, purchase, instruct, equip, maintain, don't link them in for purposes, acquire land, improvements, et cetera, demolish, or improve land, acquire land right of ways, improve or construct public ways, permit, just eat and grill, certain, basic capital and land, that goes with.
Wouldn't it be normal, you just take that out of the cumulative?
Normally, we'd use the other cumulative fund to try to do that, or edit or something like that, but, you know, editing is also going to change massively in a couple years, and so we don't know what the cumulative fund's going to look like.
Based on that, and, and helps to me, like, it might be something that we want to consider actually using. Because if we want the town to grow, to the tax base to grow, so that we don't burden our current taxpayers with inflation and higher expenses, somehow, we have to have mechanisms to be able to acquire in, in infrastructure and be proactive, and if we don't have a budget mechanism for that, how are we ever going to do it? It kind of explains the need for the situation up here in right now. So, I mean, I think that that's something that we should consider utilizing.
Oh, I'm looking at that one.
But yeah, I think it would really depend on what Jen says, on the other things here.
And then two seventy is the same thing, it's a cumulative fund for firefighting, which we don't, I don't think we need that one anymore, because we're not as hard as the fire department, so probably there was that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Two seventy-five, um, I'm legit. So under D, it's talking about the affordable house fund for two forty-six, which I think is our fund number now. But this is to receive payments from homeowners, assisting owner occupied home repairs program. We do have, that program exists, but it hasn't, but I might have been maybe once or twice in the last fifteen, twenty years. But it has to do with, with the work of housing authority, which that organization really is not very active right now. So I like to keep houses separate from the work of housing authority, just basically if you're happy with it, it's something we can handle locally, especially a full-time commissioner.
I don't think that for science, or.
No.
I remember a couple people doing this.
Yeah.
So we would do a lay list of what?
Yeah, we would just rewrite it, and we would rewrite it and just handle it in housing, as my organization, especially with building inspector, I think we'd be fine.
I'll be, so we have to fund it.
Correct. Right now, there's, there's just a little, there's like, I remember there's fifteen thousand dollars that they, that money's been there forever, we haven't used it. I don't know how it was originally appropriated, anything. It's been there for a long time, I think.
I think it's a lump sum, and then take it from it, is what I thought.
Yeah, it's just, people, I think people apply for.
Yeah, we started with a lump sum.
Yeah, and I assume you just took the zero fund money and put it in there.
Yeah, and a couple of people took advantage of it.
It's not like the society.
It would be similar to this, I mean, just taking other money and funding.
Well, what is the logic behind that, in terms of, I mean, it seems very unilaterally beneficial, like one person gets the benefit, the side grant, the community is getting the verification.
How did you have multiple?
No, there, there are, there are, there are minimum standards and things like that, written in the policy currently, which we have to use, and those are probably need to be, with that adjusted, because they're a long time ago. That was, there were, there were requirements to be, for it to be. Or we just let it pass, it's all right, I'm sorry, your call.
I'm not prepared on that. I think we need to do something with that, or.
Especially if you're in the building.
Right, that would be a good bit for that.
But I think the first step is to rewrite it, and give us full control, whatever that looks like, you have an empty base, like who, who is in charge of the approval, I mean, we've got the.
Currently, they, they went to the application, whether it's for the work of housing authority, they may, they may be, they just, and then they send it back up for payment from us.
But in this case, we're going to take it over, what is your condition, for there's a big council, or?
Uh, either council or myself, building commissioner, or I'm not, I'm not sure how you want that to look, um. Who has the final authority on that one? If you guys set policy, and then, you know, I'm, I'm happy to manage it, or whatever you want to do.
Because the side grant, you manage.
Correct.
But if somebody is truly in need, and comes to us because their fund is out, if you bring it to the council, then it's going to be public. I mean, there's no law making it public, but you, or some, I understand your saying.
And also would be a lot more time waiting, than fifty, I mean, if it's an emergency situation.
That's a good point. I mean, I think that we put the limits on it, or whatever, more more customary, if that's something we've been involved in some lately, Jay, I think.
Nothing quite like this.
Now, you could make it, uh, they, they would, even two council people.
We get paid.
Oh, yeah, you have a sound. Yeah, that's what we should do, you know, establish a committee, a table of us, and then we could make that choice like that, and we could turn it around.
Looks like you're volunteering.
I thought.
I'll, I'll be on it.
Okay. What kind of fun is all this?
All right.
Building poll.
Building poll.
And Dave.
What's it, what's it called, what's this many calls?
I'll figure that one out.
Or a little county.
Yes, or a little, maybe something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, three fourteen, um, this needs updated to reflect the correct time of council meeting, or seven thirty, or.
Yes, we're never, ever been seven thirty.
Where's the, the seven thirty?
Yep. Order of business of down council meetings, that was practically already. Okay. Point, uh. This is just a laundry list of all the ordinance violations costs. So basically, every ordinance that has a violation is listed on here, so we can go through them, or? Aren't those all? Yeah, this is everything, and they are all, and I think this is eight, and it's all dated in here. So, like, they were, like, the first one, we were talking about fifteen dollars, um, do you want to raise, anything that says fifteen dollar rate to a certain level, everything?
I think that's.
Things are five or ten, we just want to have a minimum.
I think that's wrong, Dave, for one point one five, it's up to twenty-five hundred, not two hundred fifty.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, that's what we had to review.
I know, right? Well, I think, yeah, I think, I think some days, somewhere, it goes all the way there, probably twenty-five hundred.
Well.
Like, if some days are as low as five dollars, or something like that.
Well, we can't physically enforce an ordinance for five dollars.
Yeah. What, what happened on that, is when the ordinance violation bureau was created, it was designed to provide a way for folks to get an ordinance violation and come in and pay it here, as opposed to what had to happen before, which was, you got cited, you had a petition filed in the capacity period for two, uh, just like the speeding ticket, and then they had to pay it from there, uh, and this was designed to give a couple sets. My, my presumption, all is, two fifty was absolutely intentional, and again, in that they didn't want, if it was something that was taken a thousand bucks a day, they did not want that to be automatically paid by the or, to the ordinance violation bureau, where the clerk could make that determination and get that money, but that if it was going to be more than that, and that actually did have to go down to court, to have that established.
Well, I just, I guess I thought, because it cites one point.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, and one point one five says up to twenty-five hundred, it seemed to me that was just the, I, they missed the zero.
Yeah, and my, and my guess was simply to make sure that you do not actually try to take fines over two hundred and fifty a day, uh, because that would, at that point, that'd be a lot of discretion, that you might not want to, uh, have to burden, uh, the clerk's office would make a decision by naming that penalty or not.
Shouldn't one dash one five then be changed to reflect two hundred and fifty, not twenty-five hundred?
No, 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 I'm sorry, not, I'm.
You can, you know, I mean, I know, Stan, yeah, I understand what they were saying.
No, it's just like when you go down and you get speeding tickets, you got a fine that you can pay, there's no automatic schedule for paying, but if you go to court, that's not the limit on the fine. The limit on the fine here.
Is one of two fifty.
That's right, yeah, you pay it on material, you come in, pay the clerk, that's what it could be, but if you make somebody go to court and go through that process, it can actually be higher than that. My assumption is they wanted to cut that off and say, we're not going to make any, we're not going to require anybody to pay more than two fifty if they pay it to the ordinance violation bureau, but if they make it, make us go to court, well, we may actually ask for a thousand dollars back.
So, it's like, who was this?
More than thirty years ago. I don't know, updated in a way.
I just think that some of the, the fines relation need to be, the minimum need to be a little bit more.
Like fifty?
Yeah.
Like food's fed in this one.
Yeah. Right, so we came in a portion, I think, cost was more than a portion, and we get back. So we can do like one lawsuit on all these and not have to cite them separately? Do you say that's a number, or?
Like the ten dollar fees are current, twenty five dollars, twenty five dollars.
Well, there, a- again, some of those numbers are in there, provided incentive for people to come in and pay, if they get cited, if that makes you go to court. I, how do you balance that out, yeah, I'm not gonna tell you, but if someone, uh, decides, uh, let's say the, go to the parking violation, that's probably pretty, uh, uh, non-threatening to talk about parking violations, I don't wanna talk about that.
You're like, it's completely watered.
Yeah, here, if you pay it now, if you pay it here, well, okay, this is the incentive, pay ten bucks. If your parking violation, if your maximum fee is fifty bucks. On, okay, so the most you could ever cite anybody for a parking violation is fifty bucks. And you only authorize ordinance violation bureau to take a fine if it's fifty bucks, well, people go down and incentive them and pay voluntarily. They might very well say, fine, go to court. Because I've got no incentive to pay it early. This, the bureau, the charge here provides an incentive to people saying, you know, I got a parking violation. Yeah, I don't wanna get cited, I don't wanna go to court, I'll come in, come in right away, it's gonna be ten bucks.
I just didn't realize it was a two-tier system, I thought when this was listing them, it was listing verbatim what that particular ordinance said. And therefore there was a distinction.
No, it actually provides the authority for you to establish your bureau so that you can take the money directly from the clerk, instead of money going to the, uh, county, uh, by having to go into court and get a citation and a judgment.
Someone has something for you to say, Jay?
I'm saying that there is value to have in the ordinance violation bureau, the amount of fines clerk can take, if people just come and go voluntarily, there's an advantage in that being less than the minimum fine, right, for, for somebody. I, you know, there's no magic as to what the difference numbers are, but there is, there is a, a value to have the incentive. And, so that might be, my suggestion to you is, uh, keep this like it is right now. So after you make changes in fines, you provide an ordinance to go through and changes all the fines, then go back and say, okay, well, now we're gonna have the violation bureau, we're gonna set a schedule that is higher than those numbers, but still less than that fifty, to give people the incentive to pay. So wait, wait to mess with that until you've made sure that you've made the changes in your fine numbers as you go through. That make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're making no, no changes, I don't know.
Don't change anything there right now, just anticipate that once you change your fines, you're then gonna change the schedule for what people, uh, the amount to come in and pay voluntarily, without having to pay for freight on their fines.
I'm not enough. Yeah, this is for Virginia, this is for bad checks, I'm not, I don't speak for that one.
Um, I would like to change it to current same charges. Because eventually thirty five dollars won't be enough for the bank, or the, so we kinda wanna, well, with what they're saying, instead of changing the ordinance, like, everyone will have to changes. And plus we have invoice cloud charges of fifteen dollars. Plus we have a, uh, administrative, administrative fee in our office, all of it is like seventy dollars. But I would like to change it, uh, to current bank charges.
Well, plus, I mean, plus the other two, whatever you're making. If one check costs us seventy five dollars, then we need to stay it for a few of those costs, but it's whatever the variable rate is, and plus the back cost, whatever the fee.
Right.
Can you identify the bank fee plus a single administrative fee that you would put on top of that? Yeah.
Well, because we get charged, I mean, we get a bank charge, then we get an invoice cloud charge, it's, 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 it's a fun, plus we have the R fee.
Yeah, right, if.
Just the administrative fee?
That's right, you could, I guess, say, just find a number that would appropriately compensate for the invoice cloud, as you said. Plus your own administrative fees, so you come up to somebody, say, okay, this covers our internal cost. And then the charge amount would be the bank charge plus this administrative fee which covers your internal cost.
She's wanting to have, do we have to give her the number for the bank charge?
No.
So we need to.
Right, our bank.
Right, you establish your administrative fee, let's say administrative fee is thirty bucks, how do we, thirty bucks plus the charge.
So all the banks are different, though.
And you never know.
Yeah.
So you're saying, Virginia, that R fees are how much, forty dollars?
Thirty five, right now thirty five, thirty five plus the bank charge.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So if we just say current bank charge is plus the mission, and then.
All right, what is your administrative fee? What would it be?
Right now thirty five.
Okay, you be comfortable with that?
But no, because it, um, it then becomes changes their price. So like, yeah, then we'll have to change ours again, so why can't we just say current state charges plus administrative fee? They don't even know where our mis, the administrative fees are.
Yeah, they do.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's why I said, current bank charges plus current invoice cloud charges plus our administrative fee.
Yeah, that is helpful, and how will somebody look up invoice cloud charges?
They have to come in and we have to tell them.
And you just tell them?
Oh, you just show them, how much we get charged, and that, that sort of just happens in past weeks.
Yeah, how often does that change?
Um, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, it seems to me might be easier to incorporate.
But they're being recent overriding from right now.
Right, you incorporate your invoice cloud fee plus your administrative fee, have a number you're comfortable with for a while. And then when you feel uncomfortable with that because you don't think it's covering your time plus the invoice cloud charges, then change that.
Okay, then I wanna change it to, uh, forty five administrative.
Okay.
Forty five.
Okay.
Plus the same.
Is that okay?
I think that's, yeah. Okay, we're going on.
Uh, working on this fee for everybody down the website, if we help do that, so. That would just go away. Twenty six is more details, um. This is for garage sales, um. We currently charge two dollars for a garage sale. And I think it's just keep, actually, I think the intent of it is to keep people from having perpetual garage sales.
I think two dollars is, I mean, it's why even have a charge.
Again, it's to try to, it's to try to keep people from having perpetual, never having garage sales.
If, if like the two dollars is going.
You know, like every garage sale I've ever had, I thought it was lucky to walk away with fifty dollars, so I don't know what, a reasonable charge.
It is?
Okay, your garage sales are half right. Yeah, well, mine from here, but you're selling to your garage sales, and so.
I'm a garage sale junkie, so. Let me just, yeah, it should be, I don't know, all we're trying to do is what David said, charging five bucks and, uh, bill. That's my.
You wanna raise it to five to put it to?
Yeah. It's minimal, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's very minimal, I think that's fine.
I just look at all this stuff as if there's a cost to even touching the paper.
Yeah.
At five dollars, I feel like you might well not even have it. If the incentive, if the incentive is to keep, what would I think David's point is about, you know, we don't want somebody having, never ending garage sales with their house, it's not what we want for a neighborhood.
But you can also add onto that, two, per year or something.
What do we do, that's what we have, and we keep track of who's had one.
Okay. Anyway, I'm comfortable with that.
Is that, it, to garage sales, meaning, like, this one is what, four days?
This is free.
Yeah, that's what I was always thinking of that.
Oh, so this would be example, so then you could have two more, and for one day each?
Like to the weekend, two.
You could set your calendar days.
Is that what it says?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the permit fee, or what is, what, and what is the, if you don't, what's the total?
So the four thirty is a penalty if you don't obtain one, and currently it's, uh, it's twenty five to one hundred dollars.
According to the garage sale expert's bill, Dave, that that fifty dollars was what, that penalty's for you to be here. Okay, maybe that, maybe that, that all works, but I think we should change it from two to five.
Maybe four thirty as is.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion, four thirty is fine.
Well.
I think.
A maximum of five hundred two dollars, 'cause you didn't tell someone you're having garage sales?
Four hundred.
It's fifty and a max of five.
Oh, that was something, that's wrong, I don't know, that was.
So currently it says twenty five and a hundred, does it currently?
Yeah, twenty five to one hundred.
And I don't really, I think that's okay.
What would the, uh, how would you determine whether it's twenty five or one hundred? Depends on how much they argue.
For the second, if that?
Yeah, that's, and, and that goes back to why you have the ordinance violation bureau, because if you cite somebody for that, let's say you cite them for, they were violation for three days. If you go to court, the most you could give them is three hundred bucks, a hundred dollars for each, for three days, the way it's written right now. If your viol, violation bureau says that, uh, you can pay a fine, clerk can pay, take it for forty bucks for each day violation, then somebody could wipe off that three hundred dollar potential by paying a hundred and twenty.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, depending on what you're selling, though, I mean. Crankers are nickel reporters, but somebody could set up and operate a business house that generates more than twenty five dollars in profit, and they, they obviously take the fines, it's a cost to do a business, and obviously do this perpetually, and you can't stop it.
Yeah, and that's why you've got a hundred dollars to say above the voluntary thing that they could have. But that's whenever you see wording like that, which is up to, let, no less than and no more to, that's the purpose of that wording, is to allow the violation bureau to be set up, to establish a number between those two things. Because you gotta go to court, you always have to be able to, you know, charge more, then somebody could walk away from it, that gives them the incentive to pay.
You gotta pay that to the board, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's serious.
All right, four thirty seven and four thirty eight, um, but just the, uh, out of, kind of, vendor, um. I'll go ahead, pull that one for the, for the continuing conversation on the district, because on the end of order, you wanna address this now, or? Is it time, or are you here?
We'll just do it concurrently, so that we're talking about the same thing, same time.
Yeah. Yeah, I can back it up with the time.
Four forty five?
Yeah, four forty five is for, uh, basically for place park housing, run away animals, um, we didn't, we, you haven't charged for that forever, have you?
No, we haven't charged for that, and a lot of times you get a animal in there, county will pick them up, take them down to the shelter, and you never know who's owner is, or if they find it on it.
How much, how many animals do you have at any one time on average throughout the year?
I mean, it's just sporadic, you know, maybe one a week, if that.
If that, yeah.
I'd say maybe more or less two to three a month.
So I think that you hold three, with like a hundred dollars for two weeks, how many animals? Do you know if it's your bin?
No, I don't.
Like, so you don't hold them very long, right, that, that animal?
No, we usually have them for a day, if we cannot identify them, or if they don't have a collar, we notify the animal control officer, and he'll come up and grab it, and take it to the county, uh, down to Warsaw.
So you've got a recommendation, or, or no, it was the same, or a recommendation?
No, I mean, really, I don't, I, I guess, keep it as is, just for the fact that most animals, you know, can't identify their owner, how you go and charge them.
I mean, it kind of leaves the next one, all right? And what's the other, the other part of the thing? So, the question, I guess, is do we want to know whose animals are who's in our town? Which would be a purpose of registration, right, whether it's lost, or a nuisance, or if an animal attacked somebody and you catch it, like, who's responsible?
So we have to register the dog?
We haven't done that in years and years.
Who's the entire?
Well, what, I mean, what is the purpose of these checks, I mean, going back, I mean, I gotta see, I don't know what's gonna do, no one sees animals as who's in my bill, it's a company.
Uh, four forty five and four forty six, answer is no, you're, you're trying to make sure that people have to pay for the cost of actually gathering up their animals to look. If they're not loose, they never would come into this.
So, there is a, I don't know the explicit here, but in the ordinances, there is a requirement that, that all dog owners or cat owners, I don't remember, it included cats, but, that it's required, which I was not aware of, and, and I don't know of anybody that's ever done it.
Here's your question.
So what, we need to register our animals?
Well, I think this was the statute, I mean, the ordinance, though.
It was an ordinance.
An ordinance, isn't it?
Yeah, but years ago, that was, that was in process when we had a full-time animal control officer, and she was strictly in charge of taking care of all that.
Which, I either. I'm good, I'm prejudiced or biased, I mean, I've got, it's two dogs, so I, I never registered, and I've had many dogs before, but I've never registered, so. I wasn't aware that it was a.
Yes, I was.
So you've been out of responsibility, and that's no longer a captive responsibility, I usually have to hit a tag for me.
So, given that, do we delete these things?
I'm sure you're.
Fifty one through four fifty three?
It doesn't have to do with charges for alarm, um, most of our footbath department, which you get or not, we don't do those guys anymore, so.
Delete them?
I think they'll be doing that. Does you want a charge for vertebra alarm, or?
Yeah.
Right, so the recommendation there is delete those. Or fifty six through sixteen? Please just please the present fee, you know, what was the intention of the third, or are you following, yeah?
Yeah, um, really, I mean, the accident reports is correct, that, I think that's a, still the maximum we can charge is, they get charged online for that. Bin checks we do not charge, which I don't wish to charge, um, and I forget what's contention, if there was any. Um, the fingerprints, we do charge a ten dollar fee, um, fax fees, you can delete that, or looped. Um, and the other police reports, I'm working with Jay, when people request video, um, we can charge them, uh, for that, for time and for the, uh, storage device we put it on. So I'm on, work with Jay, I'm getting an ordinance for that, running around.
And then check this out, when we talked about this year, saying that there's.
Well.
Around people.
Yeah, I've talked to Jay about that before, I mean, obviously, anybody in town, I, you know, can be nice, to keep free as a service from us, but we do experience quite a few coming down from Elkhart County. Up there, they require them to make appointments to get their bin checks done, um, so instead of waiting on them, or they'll come down here, we'll do the bin checks, and then they go. I'd say a majority of our bin checks are from out of town.
How much time does bin check take?
Bin check, ten minutes at most.
Are these dealers bringing you that?
A lot of them are. Not new car dealers, but we get a lot of uh, people that buy wrecked cars, they fix them, at body shop, they fix them and then they get them ready for resale.
So I think for four fifty-seven, then I think what we should do is amend the bin check for three per town resident and then assign two for anyone else. Um, without the tax carry responsibility to pay. But that's service for people that don't live in our town, um, the fee.
I agree with that.
And I would propose it'd be twenty-five dollars.
And I would want a stipulation that if they do come from outside Syracuse, that, um, it'd be between the office hours. That way officers, when offices closed, officers aren't having to keep track of giving receipts and taking money and that sort of thing.
Does that happen now?
No.
So during normal business hours?
Yeah, but in town could be anytime.
Do you think it's worth ending?
Um, I would suggest, yeah, that you just put it that, uh, that the checks will take place during normal office hours.
Mm-hmm.
And then if for some reason you've got an officer who's doing a bin check outside normal office hours and they feel like they wanna do it outside normal office hours, who's gonna yell at them?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and Jay, I know we talked about that before, but you had some concerns about that, what Nate was saying.
I already have some, some concerns about that as to whether you can treat uh, out of town people in differently than you were treating in-town people for almost any circumstance. Um.
It's a state requirement to have the bin check, so that probably bring up another issue, I guess.
Do you have the EMS, if you're out of town, do you have a medical call, do you pay more?
Yeah, and that's related to the cost of. Your travel, well, no, actually, everybody who's getting this is coming to town.
Well, but you're being, you're just. I think our, our resident tax dollars are paying for somebody else's, for somebody else's want, and I don't think the patient's fair that burden.
Well, I understand the logic of that, and I'm just saying that that's been a concern with other statutes about treating out of town differently than you do in-town. If you wanna take that chance, it's not a big deal, I'm not gonna tell you that it's going to uh, break the house down for somebody besides law schooler. Can't imagine that would happen.
It hasn't happened to this point, but.
I saw them bringing several other times.
The most we'll have is two at a time.
Yeah.
I mean, it's nothing too big, you're not bringing Kennedy or anything like that.
Based on my, I think that's, that's my opinion.
I agree with you, Nate.
Yeah.
I agree with you, we're providing service.
How much?
You think that's high, do you?
That, that, for a bin check, that.
I mean. Okay, so I think that covers those. What, eighty?
Forty-two is actually dead permit, we don't, we don't have too many of them running around. Probably delete that one.
I'm trying to delete it. Everybody in it, the.
Article six?
Yeah. This kind of goes back to what we're just, we're talking about this, this kind of schedule, probably, but some of them are being deleted and things like that, everybody talked about.
You don't charge for copy documents, do you?
Should we charge for copy documents for papers? Ten cents or?
That wouldn't be worth your time.
You come to walk to the library. Like, say somebody's gonna go away and be adjusted as, whatever's recommended.
Okay, okay, first thing I'm gonna do.
Yeah, I think, yeah, cause I think the four dash one thirty-one simply is designed to create a chart which covers every, what these other fees were. It actually doesn't create anything on its own, it's just supposed to be one place where you can look at everything. It's a little bit different from ordinance violations bureau, I'm not sure why you set this chart up this way, cause I don't think you have to codify it. I think you could take four dash one thirty-one out. As long as all the fees that are identified on there are actually included somewhere else. Yes, take four, take four dash one thirty-one out would be my suggestion.
Well, yeah, I'll need that, I'll make sure that we don't inadvertently that time that we're doing that.
That's right, yeah, yeah, make sure all the costs that are reflected in this chart are still reflected in uh, the uh, citation co-sexual which you have listed.
So I guess something's driving you to look it up. Let's see, permit program.
Yeah, that's a, something that's no longer active, um, how we charge for parking on certain streets? I don't know. We don't do that anymore. Probably delete this one. So like five twenty-two is vehicles one ton are prohibited, I don't know, vehicle overweight less than a ton.
I was gonna be talking about one ton, you know, in case here.
Um. It says more vehicles, weighted more than one ton.
Oh, every car. What's five twenty-two then?
Um.
I think so, international.
No, I got the report for five twenty-two. And five twenty-four is um, alcohol being prohibited in the park, and that was just questions about these devices again. Cause it goes from five dollars to twenty-five dollars, so same question, we're back at it.
Well, maybe that's a good one, you know, to me, if you're wanting to drink and it's a time of five dollars for the day, you'd be like, here's my buck, here you go. Fifty dollars maybe? I mean, if we wanna prohibit it, we, it's gotta be enough that somebody's not. Don't know how much an issue it is, you know.
Yeah, is it very lethal?
Um, I myself am not aware, uh, on fourth of July, we kinda keep a lookout for it, but other than that, we really not have any complaints.
What is it, how five did you say?
Yeah, it goes from five to a twenty-one.
Twenty-five being American. We're getting, if we're gonna have it, and I think that if, if we are prohibiting it, then.
I'm five.
Then we would get rid of twenty-two and twenty-three somewhere?
Yeah. Five thirty-eight is about trees, trees and tree boards, I don't think it's a question I have, there's language about it, the town forester, I guess, does it mean I have? So, but I'll take that as a fair approach, really not illegal or.
We've said the forest.
No, yeah.
Do we have to have this for like, tree city designation or anything like that?
The, uh, no, see, maybe we, if we have a tree board, I think that's the only requirement that they're, they're looking at. All right.
So we delete these altogether or?
No, it's a word, town forester, all that was, all references to town forester in that section, right? Yeah, the town, we have tree board, we just don't have a forest room. Like, this is more fines, it has to do with inappropriate damage or sort of go up trees. Fines are again, five dollars, fifty dollars, so.
Five dollars is the bottom?
That's why I break down, I don't see that in here. So it's five hundred, two, five hundred dollars.
I don't know.
No. I'm gonna have to make that up. Yeah, no, this, this doesn't maximum of five hundred, it's a common layer.
Well, except for replacing trees.
They could be, they could be more than that.
Way more, potentially, but. Do we need a minimum? Yeah, who determines whether we have to?
You? Yeah, no, that, yeah, and that goes back again to the ordinance violations bureau, which is, you can see, you have a number of it in the violations bureau papers, what you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay it, for five hundred, and. To me, it makes sense to have minimums only, simply have some kind of bottom line, or if you have somebody who you thought, I'll save, you know, they, we really don't wanna hammer them, we wanna make sure that you're treated lightly, cause they're apologetic, they, they did, but here's a minimum number for it.
Well, yeah, I've heard of cases where people, you know, hit the tree, tree property owners and one just hauls it down, you know, and it's like, oh, I'll just save the money. So.
Yeah.
And you can replace, you know, in the sizable tree for five hundred, so.
Do you have a minimum though?
Yeah, I mean, I think a minimum is, you know, like twenty-five bucks or something like that, but I think the maximum, not to speed, I just think you do more, because you could do more damage, I mean, gee.
Well, I thought it was higher, no, it's supposed to be a hundred percent. If you're, you're excited to set down a tree, you should have to pay for it, yeah.
The neighborhood's gonna be able to do it too, so, it's gonna be on top of the fine, yeah.
If they'll, they'll, they're definitely, what did you say, Bill?
I think it's fifty or a hundred, whatever you feel.
There is a tree what they have here, not just two.
Does it have a minimum?
No, it doesn't, it's a permanent contract.
Fifty or a hundred, if you said, for the minimum.
How much?
It appears.
Two or a hundred? Any one with a dream.
Is it specifically about trees?
Yeah.
I agree.
Maybe bushes or whatever.
Bushes are included.
I think fifty goes out of them or something, I almost think they're right, if you think. For a minimum.
Well, fifty being.
I know, maybe that's what you do at house.
Well, no, I know it says that, but I mean, fifty would be the minimum.
That's the maximum, yeah.
Gotcha.
Fifty.
Okay, well, suggest fifty, on the minimum.
Fifty and five hundred?
Yeah, I think it was really that primary is same, I think you point out where, if they cut down here, and then you can see the first one, sound of the town people.
And if we're gonna five dash five-one, I would suggest take out that subsection B of our field.
Five one?
Five forty-one.
Oh, can I start?
Yeah, that, where we were on our subsection B, it says, field conduct in our courts was in the under over civil procedure. I'm not sure what that means in that, in that context, I, yeah, anybody who wants to appeal the fine you oppose is going to be subject to the overall procedure. And I don't know what that means, sorry, whatever, take that out, okay.
So you're just gonna keep it framed?
Yeah.
Twenty-six. Regarding you.
Yeah, again, it's a five dollar, twenty-five dollar thing, um. Cause it has to do with feeding a wild animal.
How do you determine if it's a five dollar thing, trying to get a five dollar fine or a twenty dollar one, for animals?
It says, over here, don't feed wildlife, and they actually eat other animals.
Eating the feeding wild animals.
I'm not sure, I think it's.
Water, water, water. I mean, you understand that, the whole folk flag looking out at the deer and that type of thing, so, I don't know about that.
I think you could take it out.
I do too.
I haven't seen, that's who, you know, been, uh, willing, but it'll be.
Yeah, I see a nurse, we, we see the geese, but.
Can't bring them up.
Although I think you gotta point squirrels.
I got one on the six thirty-five running at large by dogs and cats, if you look at subsection D, it says, any dog or cat found roaming shall be taken into custody by the police chief, all that. The dogs, our facility is not set up for cats, and most places will not take any more cats. So, even if we get them, we have no place to put them. I mean, that's, that's true.
No, we don't, I mean. We don't want, uh, and if you want us to do, you don't wanna not have the ability to do something, do you?
No, we wanna have the ability, um, if, if we have a choice, if they do have space or we do have a place to put them, it's just right now, all the animal rescues are full of cats.
So, we leave, so I guess, where do you want to change it?
Um, instead of show, which says, we will, maybe change that wording, may.
May, and then, do you need it to be the police chief, do we need to say law person? Do you wanna be the chief, captain or?
Not particularly.
So we change their, what is, what did you say, what is six thirty-one?
Six thirty-five.
Why, why don't you change it so maybe taken into custody by the police chief, which is that's a D, and then. That way, five years from now, the shelter situation for cats changes, you theoretically could designate Joe Smith cat shelter to take those cats.
Okay.
Yeah, six thirty-five, subsection D.
So that animal regulation, from a fine perspective, it's still just a hot, you know, if we're gonna find it by dollars, I don't wanna have it, so I make the minimum, should, think we should move it up. To twenty-five, and then make the max hundred. Not a problem, but if we're gonna have it, gonna have some, including to, my tip on it.
Do you have first defense, second thing?
I already have that, that's it. You gotta go back to the charge of duty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or is this one, well, I guess, sorry, this one, I look at the TV for a bit, so I guess, we're not. We're not worried about the animal feed, but I think you can just take it out, put six point six, if it's all wrong, I don't.
We're probably not.
Yeah, let's take that.
Six thirty-five, change to may, and then, it doesn't need to be. Alright, six fifty-two?
Yeah, that was firearm regulation, or does, did you ever do that, didn't recommend any, update in, through, if you're. He's okay with leaving that in there?
Okay. Unsmoking area?
Yeah, this one, um, this says, no smoking at the council room, obviously, current state law is not the same as within H U, or if it is used to be updated, or, or your law.
Yeah, I take that one, so, exactly. Are we allowed smoking on any town property, parks or any?
Parks, parks, you're already allowed, I mean, that's from parks.
I mean, seems kinda like.
Yeah, just like state law, they do, right?
Of any public building, right, so. So we just match the state law on six one seventy-two, something that. Article sixteen, so compressed gas property, you can add weapon at home. I think on these, didn't Jim say that he saw a piece of meat in place, I did.
Um, the ability to encounter being unsafely used, um, but, you know, I wouldn't wanna stop a kid from shooting his red bird or BB gun in the backyard.
Cut your eye out, I guess.
What's the law for, where's the difference between firearms, or a firearm that's powered by compressed gas rather than lockout or gunpowder?
Well, and, and you are correct on that, they do have some compressed firearms out now, but, um, I think it's just a change in the language, we could make it. BB or pellet.
So, under a caliber, like one seventy-seven is less?
Yeah. Set along those lines.
Yeah, so it'd be like a T O two cartridge, or. Oh, yeah. So, so probably have a minor, or do we?
Yeah, so, so one seventy-nine, where is that, uh, can't have any sort of gas powered weapons in, or, weapon in your vehicle, if you don't have that, you're out, um, that'd be a little. Overruled.
Yeah.
People can't have a BB gun in their car, it's a little.
That's, that's seventy-nine.
Yeah. Do you foresee a problem in getting calls about somebody saying, hey, I just saw two people with, uh, guns, going into, uh, the dollar store, and it turns out that they are BB guns?
I mean, yeah, cause, I mean, if they think they're guns, we won't know until we get there, and it depends on their purpose for taking them in, whether in a holster, whether in their hands, I mean, you know, you have to look at the totality of the circumstances in that manner, for sure.
Sure, but I just normally, I would look at it and say, you know, if you keep minors from doing that stuff, we don't risk that escalating to a situation.
Yeah, I get.
Or if you're enough.
Or keep it on their property, not off their property.
Right, it's just, as long as it's on theirs, again, on their property, because otherwise, there, there might be others who are not as, you know, educated as law enforcement is, who decide you're yourself help, you got other kids, and then, well, I can run around town with these guns.
Yeah.
People get hurt accidentally. That's my only issue to handle, though.
Which makes sense.
Yeah. So what is the recommendation?
Uh, you're, you're, you're taking away that, right?
Just leave it as is, okay. What's the regulation?
As you review those, and they're, they still match current state laws, so there's no danger in that.
Okay. No removal.
Is that for sidewalks, is that on that tree?
Yeah.
No, I, I'm not sure how to read that. You have to clear your sidewalk. I don't see a lot happening around town, I apologize, I saw them quite a lot.
Well, I don't think, I don't believe we're enforcing it, having blocked the street for years with animals, but.
Uh, yeah, older than people.
Well, the kids, kids in school, walking to school, or whatever, if they don't, you can't get the sidewalk, so they're on the street.
Well, no one's going to school fast on them.
Well, that's a part of the town.
Most people, most of it, to the, to the school.
I think all, uh, it's, it's, is there a transfer, like?
Twenty-four hours, yeah, you get twenty-four hours to do it, and then, the, the, for a couple of works, you can't go ahead and do it, they get twenty-four hour notice, and we're gonna come clean your sidewalk, because you have that.
Get off the forty-eight hour.
No, what's helping first?
If you get. Why was playing?
Will make exceptions to town council numbers? Do you live in a town that doesn't have sidewalks?
Have we ever fined anybody of that? Have we ever fined anybody, or not cleared the sidewalk?
No, Tom, where?
Question the shit, you know? We have the sidewalks, the people can use them, if they're impassable during the winter, because people don't prepare, uh, how tough we clear them out?
How tough?
Yeah.
Most of the business owners do, but if they don't, then aren't, yeah.
So if everybody decides, well, maybe you have first kind of business, obviously, and it impacts them if they don't.
Right, and otherwise, people are a business.
I guess, my, my stance on it is, if we don't care about sidewalks, and they're impassable, then why are we hitting sidewalks, and having sidewalk materials? So why?
It also potentially assigns liability, if there is a fall, to the landowner who failed to clear off the sidewalk.
I think, nineteen fifty, or just nineteen fifty, makes it fine, we should fund sidewalks. It's not really, no, I think it is, right?
Oh, it is, yeah.
And we did more ice than we did snow. More. What, are, Tim, are you willing to enforce it?
It'd be cool. It'd be a cool.
Yeah, it'd be.
I'm assuming he knocks on the door and says, you need to clean your sidewalk, and that, and go by and say, you have cleaned it, and that's fifteen, but.
Right, and Scott actually did a little bit last winter, he, you know, from businesses, to take their sidewalks, but, yeah. Yeah, they can't do it, yeah, you can't, you're gonna find a cost unless the, uh, uh, board has decided to cite them, the board can't cite them without twenty-four hour notice, it's gotta be done. So you're always gonna be knocking on the door, or calling them, and saying, hey, you gotta do this before you all respond or do anything.
No, fine, as long as you get the number three.
I think, yeah, under that condition, I think you're okay there.
But, just the, probably that's.
No, and ice, or just, no? Is it, no, and ice?
Just that, the order says, no and ice.
Oh, that's the question.
So.
And we're talking about all the sidewalks, like.
Never, never be sidewalking them.
I, this may not be our jurisdiction, but, uh, the bridge, right here next to the, just south of the town hall, uh, that, that, you don't think of it being a bridge, but trying to walk on the sidewalk, and being forced to walk out on the street, which you do in the winter, it would seem like a nice touch, if it's possible for the town to, to get rid of that, and I know it's probably a nightmare, because you get all that flush on there, crap, that you just can't walk on it.
In our, in our, in our, you clean it every time, like, there were kind of snow pile real high.
Yeah, I, I know, it's just.
But I would gladly respond to any phone call I receive at Public Works.
Just bad, I just walk to work, you know, I, I'm, sorry.
Okay, well, bump it up to twenty-five dollars, keep it in the way.
Cause you touch the table, right?
Yeah, it's another table, so, let's move on from that.
Okay.
Vision one has to do with storing property on the lakefront, um. And basically, this conversation was, again, about fine casual.
So this is on public property, correct?
Uh, yeah, any street alley or tract right away, real estate owner occupied it, yeah, that's right. Maybe I lose their fear, or they're willing to lay on our shell, then we can, pardon them.
Does that have a problem?
Because, you have a lot.
Yeah.
Couple places that like to, just sit their fear in the, in public right away, and we, we tell them, remember them.
That's our policy generally, just tell them.
Yeah, we have to give them, chance to do it.
I mean, all these actions, I don't think we intend that we wanna clamp down on people, and they can pay, but we just want them to want it.
Yeah, we, we have to have something to turn to, if they just don't.
Exactly.
So, again, if it comes down to basically, how much do you want to file?
If, on this one, you're twenty-five to a hundred, that's my, those are the violations. So that, the division, will that be my recommendation?
Twenty-five fifty-eight.
Yeah. That's fine, with me. Talk about that one, Bill, can you say with that?
No, I, I, I agree with that, because I know that that's been a problem.
Okay, and then, noise regulation, looks like they're.
Yeah, it's saying it's all about fines.
Well, you know, they're on heartless, you guys want to turn on the heartless while they're, they're going up to the bridge, they like to lay on it, you know, if you get motorcycles, or that, well enough for them, they're chill. But, okay, the regulations, and call the police, they're a long gone, they're getting license plates.
This is probably, what is the context, if this is chief of noise regulation, David?
And.
A bayou, that's right.
Sound amplification, but, um.
What'd you say?
It has to do with town owned property and sound amplification, so, people playing loud radio in the market, right, if I love to talk about, ouch.
Why they for that one, that's plain?
Yeah.
Or any motor vehicle in public street or right, whether it's too loud.
Three hundred thousand, it's all in this one. As well. Oh, okay, yeah. Hopefully.
Right.
Play it with the example, you know?
Okay.
Sounds like seven dash six is okay.
Yeah, well, um, need to change street commissioner to public work director.
What you said is, yeah, and then, it says, three dollars per square foot for repairing back built, Mark, I thought you were okay with that, but Paul thought it should be higher, so.
Paul, Paul was saying ten dollars, just for, for, for materials and fuel, and.
We have to go back to the order of repair.
Or ten dollars, man, change it.
Pardon?
Change it to ten dollars.
I would recommend ten dollars, yeah.
My opinion? Yeah. Seven, seven thirty-five? This is one that's not enforced, and it's not being, if you're incorrect, and it probably should be, just for the urgency.
Um, I got, I agree with it. Yeah, this one has to do with building codes.
This is violation of the, of the.
That's my understanding, uh, it goes back to all of the building codes, um.
I think it's the zone, for the county, I think the, the fine maximum per day is, I believe, two fifty. And that's three hundred, but I think we should be more in line with public county, and since we follow county's own.
Yeah, cause we're, uh, fine not more than one hundred.
Right.
Twenty-seven eighty.
Been removed, I wouldn't believe it, and take that penalty out.
Okay, so take that penalty out, and I think on seven one to seven ten, we change the maximum to three hundred a day, more than mine, but, the county lists until we follow county, so, try one.
Are these for town buildings? Is there a numbering of residence?
Yeah, so we, so it requires that every house have a house number, address, number of, you know, twenty-five.
Paul, is that a problem for you guys, Tim, not having, how, houses numbered?
It can be an issue at times.
Problem for you too?
It is a problem for us, um, this week, I was helping the water department out, trying to find an address, and the house didn't have a number, and neither did their neighbors.
So does the green sign on the mailboxes, does that, does that qualify, or, it helps, or is that not a help?
Mailboxes, um, sometimes help unless they're clustered, and then, then you're guessing, um, a number on the house above the door, entrance to porch, is gold, you know, I'm looking and, and guessing, now, okay, here's two oh three, there's two fifteen, and so you, this must be two oh seven.
I don't think, I would say, this is like everything else, not like they're wanna find people for it, and we wanna get people to move towards this, so that we've got it, so then, the, the, first thing they ponder, and you know, feel like, all the workers can do their job, and, but, I worry about it, but my, you can't see my front porch, it's a knocker, you'd have to, you'd have to get right angle, right jacks it out, he can't see his front door, back door. So, I mean, is it better for us, probably, to have it on our mailbox?
Yeah, that would, yeah, yeah.
Whereas everybody else, I think, your front door can be seen, your back door can be seen from the street, so. And that's really the upper there, and I think we probably should put, up behind that, encourage more people to get, raise them, we're driving around, and there's a lot of them, they don't have a number on it.
Scott was, Scott was trying to get some of his clients, when we were here. There's a lot of them that are not, weren't.
Question, yeah.
And housing codes?
Again, that's another, not a D penalty, where it doesn't have a minimum.
Well, if they're making minimums, twenty-five dollars. Really make a minimum on the building codes? It didn't, uh, I'm fine with minimums, but, I'm not sure if that should be. Then the fees get over, and then, that makes sense when you're looking at some of that, for the, the fees, but, certainly for the fines, like I said, hard on the forces.
Mm-hmm.
Costs you more than the forces, and it's good to make it, for getting rid of, can, cost more to make it, and, and you.
I'm fine with minimum on all.
I think that's all right.
Uh, section eight, article three, division two. This one, you know, it's, it's currently set at twenty thousand pounds. My concern is that, just the RV park on the north side of town, they're gonna be using Indian Street, most of those are gonna weigh well over twenty thousand pounds.
Just to get them in there?
Just to drive into town, you know, to there, from, coming from the south. May not be a big deal and may not be important enough, but I think we should at least set it. Where it's not obvious we're being ignored. Because the biggest concern would be bridges, right, not sixteen or whatever, I mean, we have, we know they're going over those every day, so I don't think that's a first century.
Um, no bridges, um, we, uh, Paul and I talked about it, Paul Hoffman and I, the base under that road is, is, is a quality base, that's one of the, one of the better ones. My thought is, touch base with Commonwealth Engineering with road standards and get a core bore on that road and see what it'll pay. The RV park, his intention is to route all his traffic from the north, in and out from the north, that's his preference, because thirteen is so tight down here. He doesn't want that camp of traffic coming through Syracuse, he wants it coming off of six. We just had that discussion with the county. But when we pave it, um, maybe use a different mix, you know, be able to raise the rating a little bit, or switch to axle weight, which would be more specific to symmetry.
Yeah, because I think that our option there is gonna be, either we plan for it and we make it work, or we put signs up and then we enforce it, otherwise the road break, you know, could essentially break down eventually over time, so.
We really don't have a way.
That we build it, so that it's not an issue.
Yeah, we really don't have a way to enforce it.
Yeah, and we don't have commercial sales and things like that, right, so.
Yeah.
But I think that we just, I don't know, if we get rid of it altogether, is that what we do, or?
Actually, it's quite safe, sixty thousand pounds, you know.
Yeah, I, I just got thirty-eight foot to oversee, and I ha, I texted him, he said, just that alone, over fifty thousand, and he usually pulls a trailer with a Bronco in it, so you're talking another five thousand, so yeah, close to sixty thousand pounds total weight. But, but to me, like, Mark, you're, you're saying that we probably just could eliminate it altogether?
Or put no trucks, yeah, like, like some county roads well, or.
Try and discourage it.
Yeah, like semi trucks.
So we eliminate? Or is it gonna be a work in private?
To work in private.
My feeling is, you're gonna pull up there, you're gonna get a little map, and you're gonna see that, you know, three quarters of a mile down the road, and you're not gonna go up to the roundabout, over to the over the house and come back. So, I guess, yeah.
No, if they're coming in with a camper, they're coming in with a camper.
Right, work in progress, but that's gonna be a big traffic, I mean, with the amount that he's talking about, and you can only stay there for whatever, two weeks or whatever, you're gonna be cycling a lot of those vehicles through town.
But all directions that he's gonna issue to campers, bring them in from the north. So we'll see, he's trying to minimize it.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
But I think we gotta look at that road and see what we can do to make sure it can handle weight.
Agreed.
Okay. Eight fifty-nine?
Uh, yeah, that's another, um, penalties one. And there is, is, uh, above it, there's, um, mention of railroad park, which, I assume that's very work part, I have no idea. But it's called a railroad park. And then there's also a short street mentioned, which we did figure that out, where did we say that one? It's over, it's, it's what, it's now Door Street.
Yeah.
So, usually called Short Street, so that would need to be updated.
Door?
We, we were able to find it on the forty-fifth year old. Yeah, where?
Where's that mine?
Door by Hollywood, no, I'm sorry, always right.
Um. It's just misnamed in the ordinance.
Cause he, uh, sure, above that.
So we changed the language on those two items and then changed the current fines?
Oh, it's in, um, yeah. So.
Ah, okay, fifteen North Street, sure, yeah.
So change the current fine letting from twenty-five to fifty?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, actually, Short Street was, is where the nickel pier is at, that little curve, and then it became Long Drive.
Call this Short Street, where they changed to Long Drive?
It is, made a whole thing Long Drive, although Short Street's in Long Drive, they changed it, so it made a short curve, and then it became Long Drive. So probably got, yeah, four nights to make it all Long Drive.
Oh, we did Short Street.
Yeah. And we changed the per changing of fines there.
So is that just eliminated then?
So, so where the, they used to lay railroad parking, short street, changed it.
So, eight one sixty-six, uh, let's just right turn off of there.
Yeah.
I actually think that's, it's the one that I think is not that bad. But how does that record it, is that in the motor vehicle record, is it a gift for like multiple senses, or is that, we have that here now?
That would just be a.
Okay.
Do you remember that one? Okay, five one.
So this, how many of these do we have, the right of way running there?
How many do we run out?
We have, I think, thirteen, we're twenty thirteen, fifteen.
Yeah, this is the pier spaces that we, or the right of ways that we run out for people, but it here is that they're running from town, they're, they're.
Are they on both plates, or just?
This circuit.
Syracuse.
So they rent the pier space for other towns?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they have to rent the pier, or they just get access.
Correct, they have to put it in, they have to take it out, they're just renting the, they're just renting the ability to connect their peers to the land.
Right, correct, so, one, I think we gotta change it on Syracuse, or along the street, just, Syracuse. And then the B, I think is way low, I really, I really do, I, I reached out and asked a couple people, sounds like the billing rate is fifteen hundred, not granted, or higher, but granted, may or may not be providing the pier, so there is some self responsibility that's happening here that these people would have to do that they wouldn't have elsewhere, but I think a hundred dollars is crazy cheap for a pier space.
Yeah, I, I agree, landowners complain about this, I can do that, but people that own property are on their exact decision notice.
I don't, I'm not against people being able to have the access to the town, but we can charge for it, I think a hundred bucks is true for cheap, so I'm more in favor of worth of five hundred, first of all.
Excuse me, how many of these spaces do we have?
Like thirteen, that way.
Thirteen?
Does that, or maybe earthless, or, 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 should be.
Should be, yeah.
You got to do.
Should be.
Well, certainly, like, the big part would be using funds for, do the same anyway, so. That's a pretty healthy jump. Where you're on Syracuse place.
I know people that think that's ridiculous, ten hundred.
Pretty close as well?
Yes. And it's fine at five hundred?
That's so stupid.
I'm staying.
Dude, you look down. That's fine. I, I mean, yeah, we don't need to hit it so hard that, I mean, it's, it's a super big burden, but I think it's gotta be appropriate to what it, what it is, so, you pick five hundred? Is that what you?
I think that's a lot, like, personally.
Yeah, I agree too.
I mean, I think me firstly, I probably won't rent this pier for five hundred.
Well, you just admitted that you have one, therefore you shouldn't be playing it.
I'm gonna do my personal.
Well, I get it, but.
I'm not hoping, I'm just handling it.
Well, probably me and you are the only ones who, you represent a lot of people that are town representatives. That are probably in favor of a higher figure than that, that would be my recommendation, so we can vote on it, you know, when it comes time, when I'm gonna draft it, five hundred, you can put it to a vote, and see where we're gonna end it. How often do people sign to town, people with their small park?
I will.
Well, I mean, assuming you, people are just doing it every year, or just renew, 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 aren't they?
Yeah, I mean, we have new people every year, you know, how we operate is January second, um, they can come in, it's first come, first served. So, the majority are people who re-rent, they may not get the same spot, obviously, um, we do that for two weeks, and no one who lives on the lake has a chance to rent until after two weeks. That's to keep landowners from coming in and renting out the space next to their house, just to keep people off of it.
That's, that's what I see.
Well, just for historical reference, I will remind everyone that the town of Syracuse was in a long drawn out lawsuit in the nineties, uh, the new rest laws, uh, landowners or significant others of landowners, and, uh, uh, I mean, I don't know how many thousands of dollars the town paid for in and out those attorneys, and we ultimately won. Previous to that lawsuit, people for years and years and years were, I mean, of course, the town of Syracuse changed significantly, but, I mean, people just put in their peers and row boats, or fishing boats, or whatever, and that's what it was. No one, no one had done anything until that lawsuit, and then in the lawsuit, ultimately gave Syracuse the right to control that, rather than the landowners and right, area and rights and all that. So I'm just, I'm just throwing it out, that there was a, there was a big deal from thirty years ago, and that, so. And I was offended.
I think that sums up what we had on ordinance, is when it is. Just put on that. And then we go to, I, Chris, give the hand book real quick.
You have to prep the order?
On the, what was that?
Uh, the, uh, food truck was in that one, do anyone order?
Very close to, it doesn't, I guess that's a matter, whatever, let me call in the food truck issue, and we'll, 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 around that. You gonna take us five minutes, right? We take us five minutes on here, then?
I'll leave everybody.
It's coffee, not a.
It was more often.
I went to, I went to, I didn't, I didn't, it's beautiful there, it's out here.
I don't know where the ad was. They'll see that pop up, and then you just step on that. Family.
Yeah, I think you should use the money for this board to buy that house.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you should, you should have rights.
Are you waiting? They were, yeah.
So, but then you, you going down through, uh, the main.
I'm like, missing steps, cause I walked up there.
All dogs didn't have license, do you license? Yeah, that's another question I was gonna ask after I left here, I was gonna ask, I hadn't had a license, my gosh, so.
That could be a fire.
I wanna know, it was just a division. But it was, it was now, it was just down, like I was talking about tree.
Oh, we went up there for dogs.
I think Short Street, it's hysterical being right next to Long Drive. It's, I mean, the irony of that is just. Who the heck, someone's actually called me and sent me a voicemail.
Yeah, so, now, I'm so.
Yeah, I will, I will mention that one today.
Okay, great, okay.
Yep.
Didn't you decide to delete that, that company?
I don't know if you did or not.
No, they did earlier on.
That one, they talked about registering.
The animal license.
What did they just want? They didn't have a sign.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't have a note.
There was, we were talking about registration, that's it.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, registration, but then it came to license.
It has a microphone that is.
To me, that's the same thing.
When we had our VCA.
Well, why is it that stuff?
We moved it over here, you know, and we could hear, and it's going to go. Well, I, I, I tried to, uh, at, at the beginning of the meeting, I started listening and I really couldn't understand.
Yeah.
Well, I think I know their doctrine, and I was sure that they're, we got over there.
But then eating it, it's not always.
Yeah, but our dog licenses, that's not the same as like, great, most are two different kinds, right? So, do we have to have our dog licenses for people even care, cause it used to be, you go to the vet, when you went to the vet, they gave you the stuff.
Usually your license is like the renewed cat.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you don't get those anymore.
You don't get those anymore.
I do, every year for my cat.
I do.
She doesn't wear it, but I get it.
Mm, no, I guess it depends.
You get it through your vet?
Yep. I'll get it next month, actually, when I take mine in. They'll give me one for each one, stick it to the end of their receipt, cause they don't go outside, so they're gonna be paying to order.
Yeah.
Get this guy driving all, twenty minutes home. Rider law. I've got a camera in the front yard. Yeah, so we went and bought a new junkyard riding hall. I pushed motive last time, ten ounce. No, four thousand. We'll just take it up like four tons a year, yeah, and, and behind the six, four miles for the immediate yard. It keeps the critters knocked back, if we keep the.
It keeps the critters knocked back, if we keep the. I just saw. I would suck the camera off.
Well, I know a lot of her, you know, it's a great act, but I really couldn't understand what was being said.
I'm gonna shoot it, okay.
Yeah, I like.
So, that's why I thought, ah, just jump in the car and go.
When I order one, when I use my place.
Those are the type of stuff I wish I could care, and, and.
When I put my.
When I read.
So forth, left, no, and I was looking at the side, and my mom, and I was going, oh. Seventy seven years, it has, but there are different computers that are just, you know, it's not a good. And they will come up and say, this is what we're recommending, and I have to put them on, it's definitely been there, and then all that. But I, I Google it.
I just ran into that mistake, cause I've been doing, like, grant houses, yeah, painting, that's a whole. First, no, no, um. Don't go, having to go three times, three weeks.
Is there another north street down beside the lake somewhere?
Well, I know.
Sometimes, I don't know. And they will, they'll come and they'll say, well, we're here, no, no, you're not. Yeah.
And we're just running into a lot of problems on Google Maps, which probably would work.
Yes, oh, I'll bet.
And, and she does. And then, you know, those, the terms that we use, Google Maps to come in, and it'll bring them into an app, and I think it's a goal.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, she'll click it on that.
Yeah, I'll bet.
We're trying to work on one other people, getting all the better of it.
Mm-hmm.
Which I thought in that one was, which goes weird. Makes sense to me, but given the circumstances that we have, it kind of doesn't. But it says, "Operation, any such unit is movable and must be returned to its primary place of business where otherwise removed from the location where it was granted by the town no later than sixty minutes after establishment ceases to be available for provision of food to the general public for the day." So, in that ordinance, that basically says to me that any, any food truck would have to leave the premises and go back to assuming, I don't know where.
Not the room.
All the premises, but is that in cases to a general policy in the town? Or is that on town property?
It has nothing to do with town property.
Okay, that's the way I was reading it. We didn't understand that. Really with that ordinance, I'm not sure. The one thing that I didn't like in the end was talks about property, if you're on a private owner's property, you should have, oh, never mind. I don't know about everybody else, but I don't have major issues with that one. I did like the guideline that, you found those guidelines in San Diego County?
Yeah.
I think they're pretty comprehensive, pretty reasonable. And obviously another extremely close line, you learn current. So, I don't know if the, do you have an ordinance of an amount of guidelines? Or how we got what was the purpose of what they did in giving out that?
Well, for even this, yeah, in San Jose South Bend, you, you can, well, obviously there's data, you know, a lot of food trucks. But the idea is, the guidelines, uh, instead of guidelines, it's San Jose South Bend, which incorporated things that tell a food truck owner, well, here's what the state requires, here's what the town requires, here's what the health department requires. Here are all the things that you might want these to be interested in. It wasn't to establish anything, it was simply kind of encompassing all the different regulations that various units had that might affect the food truck.
So then, the one that all amended, or some of each structure, I think, is one that we would want to look at. If we were to adopt that one. Certainly, we're everybody's opinions on the ordinances that drafted.
I'm fine with, with saying, I, no, you shared your first, I had, there's no pride in ownership here, okay? If you're going down to, no, it's fine. I've been pairing that, I was attempting to at that point, take ordinances that other places had prepared, bringing what I felt were the highlights, and still waiting to make sure that it's really meeting the problems that the council believes need to be addressed by owners.
Right, which I think is really what the outline of this was, because this was, as this was, it was opinion for everybody, where there's alignment, where there's disagreement, and then filling in. So, I think most of it are duration and frequency of permits. Most of these ordinances that we've looked at have a daily, weekly, and some yearly permit fee. And then they have a maximum number of permits that somebody can contain. And if we're to be standing on permit fees and some other days that somebody can have a permit, does that mean?
No.
That's not in here.
No.
Open this one.
It's in there.
Okay, you have no idea, start now, sorry.
Yes.
Those fees are less than what we currently charge, isn't it?
Well, we don't have a specific food truck fee, right?
Right, we have mobile vendors.
Right.
Or food, or anybody else. While you're considering that, Chad has some notes he let me pass on. His concern is, um, the park has its own kind of food truck program. So, they, um, for like, Fourth of July, other special events, they'll, they'll allow food trucks to come down there. Um, they kind of, they have their own fee schedule, that pays something, fifty dollars for the day, um, that they charge. And, um, I wouldn't, you know, we, if we can make it so that the park's department kind of has its own set of, uh, guidelines for food trucks, or if you want to somehow appropriate that into the ordinance. Um, I would, you know, if they're gonna have food trucks in the park, I would want, I'd want Chad to approve those, um, before we allow them, since they have a coordinate. Unless I can find regulation, I think it's more of a park regulation.
What was this fee schedule?
I think it said fifty dollars for each of that.
Our owner says you couldn't park on.
City property. Without permission, right? Without, without your permission. So, there's city property in there, there's a park, so you can't separate those out with the chat. And make his own schedule for the. And then, like, we also need to keep in mind the farmer's market across the street. When we're doing the, it, it's things that ever, but when we're doing the mobile vendor thing, um, they, they charge those people that set up the park, a separate fee to the park. So, we don't want to double charge people.
Right.
So.
Like, you're talking about like a hot dog park or something?
Correct, like, we have a hot dog vendor that comes up every, every team, like, um, that they, they pay a fee to the park, and not the town per se.
Well, we currently charge six hundred dollars for a one-year permit. Now, are you going down to two hundred dollars?
Well, yeah, this was just, this was just, that was just special to another town.
Oh, okay.
There was no other dollars.
I mean, those are just the fees that were written when they were outside, we played your eyes.
Okay.
I had no idea that someone was. We don't talk about what would be for the.
Well, that's the problem, we didn't come up with a solid answer, so that's the effort today to try and figure it out. How they got here, on this one, duration and frequency of a daily permit. I think you all agree that we need permits. Is that right? So, what is that daily rate? If the park department is doing it, it's fifty dollars, then, you know.
We think we keep what the parks does.
No, that's, that's what it's always been.
There is a, on the right, with the permit fee.
Again, is that right, is that fifty dollars?
No, there is a non-resident vendor's permit, which is figured out, because that would last schedule over there.
Or, yeah, just, I knew we were just, we're, we're putting. So, the vendor could be, could be very wide with.
Right, yeah, yeah, this is a, this is a much smaller category than, than non-resident vendors. That could be, I think, it's all, that could be, I'm not sure.
Right.
Um, yeah, broad.
But you're saying that Chad's rates fifty dollars on a.
That's correct.
I know that one.
Then again, he does, does he do a main fee and then a daily fee?
No, it's just a, a fee. So, they charge a fee for like a food truck, comes to the Fourth of July. They charge fees for the vendors that set up over here for the farmer's market, and so on. But we, the town, don't quite pay that very much from that part.
Yeah, but I don't think they're going to overlap the park, but I think if, if that's, if it's going great, then it's acceptable to people. And we have people coming, then I think that that's a fair, a fair fee from a daily perspective. And the question is, does that change either week or fall in? And then, does it change on a yearly basis or four months? What are you guys' thoughts?
I don't.
Are you saying, you know, if they come three weeks in a row, they should get a discount?
Well, I'm saying if you, if you pay a, if you get a weekly permit, instead of a daily permit, is that rate gonna be equal to seven times the daily rate? Or is it gonna be less than the, what that number would be?
I mean, weekly, it's a year.
And they're usually days a day, aren't they?
Yeah. I think even, even the ones that we've had recently that are here, I haven't seen any that are here for more than a day.
No, they're, I mean, most of them live here every week.
But they're not throughout the week.
Correct.
They're daily, daily permit. I mean, we certainly did not give anything else. I mean, we could certainly just say fifty dollars a day, and it doesn't matter if it's three hundred sixty-five, or if it's six, or one.
Right.
What are the thoughts?
So, so the people that just come in and park like it, um, like the food center, do they give, do they pay a?
They should be.
Yes, and I think they all are, like.
And Chad doesn't have any trouble with people paying.
No. It's not like that.
So, it's, then they would like that at a time.
But typically, we've not had vendors for more than a day early weekend.
And do they pay the permit fee off them?
That would be a, that would be a daily, so that would be, you know, a year. He never won weeks within thirty days, he wasn't having ninety days, he was, he was coming. He's supposed to, it's like a daily rate. Which, if we remember when this topic came up, this gentleman from Foodtown, that was his big complaint was, they come in, they set up shop beside my business, I'd rather give them the money to not be there because of competing with my business. Because they can come when they want and go when they want, and I can't do that, because I'm setting up shop. So, I think that that's less than what he said, that that was, like, I can't remember what, ninety dollars picked up, man. I forget what he took. But I think, given them from a tax discrepancy perspective, I think that that helps make up the difference.
Oh, I'm fine with the fifty dollars a day, I think it's close to fast. And, and then they add yearly fee to yearly pass, of six hundred dollars. Which is maybe higher than other communities, but again, we're concerned about safety.
Right.
So, you're thinking there should be a daily and a yearly?
Well, a daily and an annual, yeah, if you're gonna be here every weekend. I'm not food truck business, so I don't know how many people come, or do you say?
So, with that, I mean, with our, I can think of the two people that I see regularly in town. Uh, would they be paying then a yearly, since they come every, every weekend during the summer?
So, they would have to make that decision, thanks to most of them, which is.
Well, I know, but I mean, they would have the option of paying yearly, then, which would likely be, because that would only be twelve days. I mean, if six hundred is being twelve days.
I would think about twelve weekends.
Yeah.
Pretty much, mostly the summer, except they could be here for a weekend.
Yeah.
I, I, I wouldn't have any problem with that.
So, the thing is, that you guys are thinking work.
I can see the, the fifteen days.
So, fifty for a daily permit, six hundred for a yearly permit, that's where they go for that weekend today. Roughly, for the other, other reasons.
Thirty days, ninety days, a year. For the southern community. Most food trucks are set up at the baseball ground. We have that.
I know we have, but I.
The company.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, with all the, uh, government.
There's a, there's a.
And our concession there.
Yeah, we, a park's department operates.
Yeah, I'd have to be there to say, right. So, we're cutting in the other hungry.
We don't have to get, yeah, we can move on to the other, with line items in here too, which would be, um, the vendors, the maximum days of the year, so to give it. What, what do we have for, or what, what are your feelings on if we have a maximum number of days that you can do it, give an annual rate, is that three hundred sixty-five days a year, or is there a maximum number of days? And then that, the other question that's asked here is how many at any one time?
How many vendors?
Yeah.
Three, with what falls, seven, eight, and then, you know, we're down here, and what's summer, twenty, thirty, forty thousand. I don't know if it hurts that, here at four, um, vendors in town at one time.
Would we want to put a number on it? Should there be, or should, shouldn't there be a third, if there's, no, no, they don't.
Don't you do that, then you got people coming in first year, and driving up there every weekend. And other people didn't get in.
Right.
So, if you put in annual, six hundred dollars, could you not exceed that amount of appearances?
Well, I think that's the question.
Yeah.
You might, you might have three people that come around, they take all the annual one, and if you cap it. If you don't cap it, then you could, you have fifty of them.
Yeah, you're right.
But of course, you could have fifty restaurants. Right?
Right.
Let me see, could, the old restaurant, right, the two of those, too.
Right, can we get property tax revenue to that?
Well, that's a big argument, yeah.
That's always the balance, which is you're getting direct property tax revenue, which you're not only getting, you're getting fees, which you are not getting from the restaurants. And how does that all balance out?
Which was the complaint from, that started all this.
I'm sure it doesn't, I don't know, um, I don't know.
Those are those two.
Sorry, if we don't win the, we don't win that one, we have one, one judge. Then, next year, if it was out of hand, we could make a change.
Certainly, you all, certainly always have the ability to change any of these things.
Yes.
So, but the question is, is that when we have them now, it's not geared towards any, it's not geared towards the category, therefore, it's a little bit broad. Do we want to narrow it up, because we had a complaint? That's been missed both, so, yeah, but, but, what all the circumstances are for that, I don't even know. But, we got over twenty-five places in town that serve food. So, do any of them have the same concerns, which is questions of rates, and the chamber handle some of that? And the answer to that was, some felt like we should have corporate fees, some felt like we should have no fees, and some, and carry. So, I mean, it's a full range, which would be, to be expected. Um, so we need to take some, some level of action. I think it's appropriate that if you're an outside vendor, and you're coming into the town for the benefit of yourself and your business, like, you have to pay something into the town, because whatever other business in town has to do. Um, so I think that that's, that's totally fair. But what brackets are we putting around there? You know, some of these are how, how close they can operate with an existing brick and mortar restaurant without written permission, and I think that that's a valid thing, although that's kind of hard to do in this town with so many food establishments. Um, maybe we care about that one, maybe we don't.
I think it's, I don't think we can limit every single possible thing, but I do think that maybe we would. But, what, six hundred dollars a year would be something we could stay with and see how that works, and or is that something that, I mean, they haven't been a problem, but have the.
Well, I think that, that our, part of it, I'm wrong, with the origination of this solicitor fee as a beginning was, because that got out of hand, and that was in the sense of reign, and then, according to what I've been told, I don't recall it.
No, no, they could spoon them, so. Well, you know, that's what Larry has shared with me, that, you got before this, there was a table up and down, especially on weekends, there's just mobile, just act everywhere. Not, not necessarily just.
Selling, trying to be selling.
And that's what created the tamper, you know.
Making work of the circuit, yeah. So, we already have that in place, if we, if we just want to use that and force it as it is, as it's been since that was enacted, and not worry about any of the rest of this unless it becomes an issue. We can certainly do that, too. But I do think that in some of these ordinances, there are relevant, there are relevant things that are important. Insurance and indemnity being one, uh, potential location restrictions. Basically meaning that somebody that just helps themselves to, you know, especially a business that might not be open on the weekends, like, uh, banks in the afternoon, or anybody else, you know. I think some of those things are appropriate, um, that are in that other licenses, I think. There's a youth and noise provision, some of these signage, um, provisions, which I think makes sense. Take the requirements, you know, just all public safety type stuff, that makes a lot of sense to have if you're gonna have something like this, especially something that's got, you know, propane, or grease, or whatever associated with it, that goes beyond what a normal solicitor situation would be. You're gonna sell drugs, it's not gonna have grease on the hopeful, so. But these are things, I don't think it's anything that any of us are against, but I think, given the fact that they are things, at some point, we're gonna have to put some level of, um, kind of specific context to the brackets, so that we've got guidelines that are followed, and keep everybody safe. This is a good answer. I'm fine, I mean, I'm personally fine if you guys want to keep, keep the peddler's provision, but I think that we need to tack that on, those, those fee structures, to some of these ordinances that have requirements. We don't have a requirement for peddlers to have any kind of insurance, insurance or indemnity, right? But I think it's appropriate for these special businesses to have any kind of coverage, we operating in our.
We would, to require that in that peer ordinance, hundred dollar thing, I mean, there's a requirement that people show insurance with so much money. So, I, I mean, I agree that there should be liability coverage for that vendor.
Okay, so I guess, out of these restrictions, if we take some of the context in here, and we formulate our own specific ordinance, do we care?
No, something, Dave, did you make, no, something on this, this? Yeah, 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 you gotta copy my copy.
Yeah.
I mean, that's mine, but, but there were no appears.
I got, I got one that he said, but I don't think I have.
It did not, no, it didn't.
Okay. So, I guess, I guess for the fee structure, do we want to keep it exactly the same as the solicitor's fee? Or is it wrapped up, yeah, a food truck specific ordinance?
And, and, and what is our current one, say, fifty a day and six hundred a year, truck here? Uh, the food is fifteen dollars a day, one hundred dollars for one, ten hundred dollars for everything.
Okay, so, a year would be six hundred. Okay, fifteen? Well, I think we should stay online with our.
Park.
Yeah. Okay, so if we were to make that fifty, and we were to make the annual. For six hundred. So, then the question is, do we want, do we want to limit the amount of permits days in, in a year period? Could be for sixty-five, or sixty-six, or is it, is that number?
You mean for totals, for all vendors, or just for that vendor?
An individual.
Not to exceed X amount of days, that'd be.
That's my question.
I like that.
I was just thinking about the one that's been approved. It's already been approved for, for twenty sixty-five days, but right now. So, we've got to, we've got to change that.
Well, okay, I mean, if we change it, or, or, we could make it not, right?
Cynthia, you're talking about a question about a permit that somebody's already used for. Well, that permit is going to last for that year. So, you're right, you're not changing what you have sold to somebody already, but that's fairly, I'm saying, when you're changing numbers and taking rates, where somebody may already have fallen over the previous one, they've already walked that. Uh, if they buy, if somebody buys a, uh, that pays for that permit now for six months, with two hundred dollars, and you change it to four fifty, you're right, you can't go plus the other one fifty.
It'll be next year.
Right, it's gonna be the next six months, or the next year, just like the number of days. That person who has that one-year permit, there's no daily restriction. Once you pass this ordinance, the person who buys it the next day would have that restriction.
Well, I think you're also thinking about the fifty, obviously, so, since her consent is to be there every day, does that, is that different than three hundred, the six hundred dollars for a year, and how many days do you have? Any one else? It will actually, we can't. That's why, I mean, it's gotta be for everybody.
Right, but if you have, I, I, please correct me if I'm wrong, but you're talking about if you put a daily maximum on that, well, that next year, she presumably would not be able to have that same business model that she's got going this year.
But also presumably, you've got to send that for this year.
Yeah, so, I mean, they've got a permit for that for this year. And then, of course, you're also looking at the fact that all these rates are gonna change January one, twenty twenty-seven, that the state has decided it's going to legislate in this area.
But that's more on a help, help permit, rather than to business.
I don't know.
Right, yeah.
They're, 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 they're coming.
Right. So, again, that question is, is there a limit? Do we want to limit the date for years, that somebody can operate? And do we want to limit the amount of people who can operate? That are two questions that we had, that have been posed, that we have not come up with any, or to this point.
I don't know what the number would be for limiting the number of vendors. I don't know how we do that.
Yeah, I don't know either. They have to race in the first day and sign up and gallop all the spaces. No, I, I think you can go, for a year being three sixty-five or six.
So, no, no limit on the number of days of operation for years.
Right, that's why I've, I'm like, you're saying, maybe.
Right down the end.
Okay, where are you going?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so then, if you're there, maximum is, I mean, you talked about it, from what we're proposing to vote on. And then, how about a maximum number of vendors that we can have in town at any one time?
I don't feel good about that number. I mean, I don't know what that number would be.
What's the most you think we've had in one day?
I have no idea.
Five or six.
But you start talking about that special holiday, when you've got like, the awards, and the parks from the community center, and the, you know, every, or that we have, yeah. For the fishing people, and who knows what else, I mean, there's like, it's. For the fishing people and who knows what else, I mean, there's like, you know, like a, a better four or eleven. Well, they don't have them already, I would think they would have them when they have these big fishing rooms, they have something going on.
Well, but that's, but again, that's the question, right, so are we concerned about our existing businesses and protecting them? Or opening up for anybody with a mobile food business to come in and transfer stuff, what it is here? And that's the question.
Yeah, it is.
Well, you want free enterprise, but at the same time, we have property in our account, that we wanna make sure people wanna invest in our account, so it's. And we have one business that is involved in this avenue of food trucks, who's made some level of commitment. And I would assume that they would not want the whole town to do that since they made that commitment to have the same thing happen, I would, I would assume that that's a reasonable assumption, might not be true or not, but. The whole premise of having a property is having, having the ability to do what you, hopefully, what you intend to do there, and allowing it, just anybody to roll in with a permit, you know, competing against you. Kind of takes, I I feel like it takes enough away from that, to my experience.
Let's see, where are the two sixty-five?
Why does?
Um, figure it out.
Well, I mean, directly, yeah, you just have, like many people, if anybody felt like it was good and felt supply and demand are no longer in that, but if you cannibalize your brick and mortar in the process, then you end up with a bunch of work.
Right.
So.
I'm like, check it out. Well, I'm probably gonna check. Three hundred and sixty-five.
What would your recommendation be?
Well, no one's gonna be doing three sixty-five, in in Sarah's, I don't think so either.
But I think that, I think having a maximum number of vendors, I think makes sense.
Really, you're gonna do it, if you just figure out how to do it?
I have, I have no idea.
With, with no number having more than X amount of days.
I mean, you might want twenty in July fourth, I don't know, but, you know, you, but you wouldn't normally want more, you know.
I was thinking you could do a part out period, right? Actual number of X, except for this window?
You could decide that, for example, you would sell a permit, you sold an annual permit, you would allow that to be here, uh, Memorial Day weekend, Fourth of July weekend, Labor Day weekend, and X number of other days, you could do it that way.
If we have to come up with.
Little weekend.
I'm not so against, I mean, personally, I'm not against the maximum number of days, but I just would like to have a maximum number of vendors.
Now, the number of vendors a year or day?
No, of course, not any given day.
Like ten minutes?
Yeah, any given day, yeah.
I'm just gonna have ten.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I gotta.
You gotta start somewhere.
So the person's gotta enforce it, how you or, how you organize that. Which is, when twelve show up, which two are they gonna take off?
Well, one without them.
Well, then I, then I, then you'd be far in control to it at the beginning, if you, when they buy the permit, tell you what days they're gonna come in.
Right.
That, which might be a tough thing to do, and then worry and say, okay, I'm gonna commit, okay, I know that date was three days in office. Maybe they'll be able to, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just raising questions.
So, so let's compartmentalize this one, in theory, if it was E B D minister, are we in favor of a maximum number of vendors or not, or we just wanted to be as many as care to show up?
I think for a restaurant, we're questioning.
Okay, so this is, so then if this is T V D, like, I mean, we're not, I don't think we're gonna call it that, so T V D that part, sounds like maybe we don't wanna do a maximum number of days per year, so that's probably just mixed, but that could be decided, that's fine. So those, I was, just trying to get to a framework with some of the graphics lookable as, um, relevant to our town. How far that you need to be from a brick and mortar, five hun, that's a, I mean, that's a, that's a determination, I think some is, low is ten feet and some is high as five hundred feet. Or do we care?
Every single number on the call is employed.
Well, it's like, I mean, even this one has like, uh, operate within, I mean, that there is some sort of location restriction, right, one day. I mean, I, I, not that I care again, because I don't feel like I'm the author, but, but this seems to have a lot of the topics that, right, that needs to be addressed, right? And what, what penalties and business requirements, safety requirements, or pivoted hours, insurance, things like that are all.
Yeah, the framework.
We make it just as big down to whatever we think.
Framework, I think it's good, we need to get this to specific, you could have it incorporated in that framework and catch up. So what is the difference? And that, and this is a difference in timing, this is a difference in how great permission, if you're giving somebody the option to get permission, and somebody says, I don't care, park beside me and let's go ahead and do it.
Well, I mean, most of these places are parking in a, in a bank parking lot or. U center parking lot, maybe the community center parking lot, I don't know, but. So they aren't close to anything else, um, I mean, even the one that seems to be in question, don't park away or are they from any other.
Oh, Riviera Stand was right beside a bank, so, which is right beside a U Center. Now, the bank could be a buffer, depending on the business that we're talking about, but if they got permission from the bank, parked right next door, are, are we okay with that?
Well, if you have to, the restaurant owner to go over and talk to the bank, say, hey, so.
So I mean, I mean, I feel like we're creating a problem. Well, that's what I came in and talked about with the great. Well, there's, there are gonna be people that complain. Well, one person's house, like, I mean, there are people that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a problem, you guys, we only ever had one person.
I had one person call me about a coffee shop down that day.
So, which is fine, we can, we can take this, I mean, we, I'm, I'm just after the question, I mean, it can be zero fee if you want, I'm just, I don't know what we wanna do from a framework perspective. Is a hundred in this?
You know, I have a business share on thirteen years ago, where somebody wanted to settle on my apartment, and they always think, offers me a fee. You know, and can I settle out here for three, like, thirty bucks, do they do that?
I'm going to do it, but that's where you, like, in here, this is saying, part of this, and one of the notes was, with approval, like, so if I went to do it after hours, after you were closing, you not even know about it. If you're a, a regional bank, your manager might not even live in town, they may, they might not have any idea.
But, I mean, that is, a trust pass issue, if you ask me, I mean, it becomes a criminal issue, or possibly, or, or a civil issue, I mean, that, that seems like we're getting into somebody else's daily work of business if we start trying to regulate, but.
You know, we don't want you here, you have the right to be here.
But you want to be zero fee, that's what you're saying. But we, we don't even have to.
If we don't, we don't have anything in our current one?
We don't have a food truck home. This one that, if you put together anything, it had a hundred in it. This one that's in.
Yeah, I saw a hundred in there.
It said one hundred.
It was a special event. I don't know why it's a special event. I, you know, I would think, I'm just wondering if I feed or something, but I don't really know that we need to. I mean, I, I think we kind of need to see, get something in place, this six hundred and fifty and whatever, I think something on the line of this outline would, would be sufficient. Anybody could probably put it together with a question about amount, but I think in some regards, we're really borrowing trouble, we, we, I don't know why we're gonna have any more vendors come in all of a sudden in the past these last thirty or fifty years. I mean, so I, I, I don't know what we're gonna try and eliminate that, that is pressing, except for perhaps a little. Vendor that's come in, that we've never had, because they are, it's, it's a different situation than what I think of as typical, mobile food vendors, selling chicken and pork and whatever for.
We already have that piece in, we just, we don't, we don't really have the business part, and all this shit that's new along, that's, that's, that's fine.
If it becomes an issue, it becomes a risk.
Yeah, absolutely, um, I think we talked about the fee, so. But this is an enforcement piece that we didn't have, like, if you, if you operate and you don't have a permit, what was the violation plan be? Not that it'd be equal to a day's pay, or a day's rate, or the yearly rate, or a separate number.
Well, it would have to be more than the pay of the year, I agree, a hundred dollars.
Well, and there's a place in here, for, and again, they have their own numbers, but, I mean, there is a provision here for penalty enforcement and industry liability.
Correct.
We could make them a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, whatever the amount, but I think it's in place, right?
The hot factor, what numbers are in there?
Well, we're gonna have first, second, third, fourth.
Defense committee, I mean, I think if you, if you are knowingly going against our penalty twice, I think after that, you just.
So, w- why don't we just do first, defense, I don't know, hybrid, two hundred?
Well, we're at fifty, it's more than double, I think it would be like, at least four times.
Two hundred?
From it would be, so yeah, two hundred.
And then, last offense would be like, or a second after whatever would be five hundred. Well, at some point, we might, we might end up, yeah, you might just say they're not gonna be granted permit after two offenses, and what happens if they just show up? Well, I guess we call Jim.
They, they could be a request, we start, because the permit could be suspended if they violate under the witness, so they would not have the right to be there, uh, if you violate the ordinance, uh, we should have a nice chat with them, theoretically, one fact, if that didn't stop, or you really learned what stopped them, you go get a restraining order from the circuit court.
Correct, so, at that point, yeah, so, two, two hundred, five hundred, and then the next thing after that is payment, right?
Yeah.
Or anything? Correct. Perfect. Um, I guess those are really straight ones, so I think we could take that, put something together in, in a framework, fill in the blank on those that weren't ours, insert ours, and I think we'll have a little bit of work.
I have, I have.
Meter it up or down from there throughout the.
I have a question, do you realize that, is that if I, if the producer's street is gonna have some kind of gathering, we are food trucks come in, will we pay them that other time? And they didn't charge, would be, sorry, would be gathering coming, you know.
I think that what, one of these, I think the guidelines of United States of County law, is one of the things that I read, I talked about that, and it said that it was permissible, basically, it's like, almost like a theater.
I believe that's.
Like a theater, or a graduation party, or something like that, and that was in a residential neighborhood, which I think, yeah, I think that that makes sense for people to have that option, um, but I think that. Those guidelines, I think that's why I was questioning some of those, if we had our normal stuff, and then we have the guidelines that outline it for people to work with, which, I think, it's pretty comprehensive in burrow, I think that's.
Well, somewhere you're paid.
Right.
Yeah. Well, true.
Okay, so the last agenda item was the handbook, and I think that we've talked about having you guys present that to us at the council meeting, a normal council meeting, uh, for recommendations, so I just feel like we can work through that one pretty quick. And, that's okay with everybody?
Yep.
At that point, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, second, second, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, I like the walking, because I'm very walking, and I know it's a, uh, she said, uh, I live better.
Can you, can he get, can you fire it off right now? Like, how do I wanna get back to it off?
Of course, my wife, uh, who was walking, uh, and my wife said, oh, I fired it off, they moved the wine cup, and it's, it's. Well, I, I, I got another one, I can come back. And so, that's one of the, yeah, I'm waiting for the, I'm waiting for the hundred with it, those are my first ones. I, 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 I thought of that speaker.
Oh, did I?
Yeah, yeah, so I thought, yeah, and I turned it on, and it's not really, to me, and it, and also, you can, there's, in fact, who is, there's, there's, so I was like, yeah. Okay, okay, I, I walk the button, oh, yeah, we're here, that's, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, there.
That page hasn't been here that long.
Well, I've never seen anybody on that thing.
No. It's a body, or we see what you're saying, yeah, okay, yeah, that's all time, yeah.
Did he call to, why can't he?
Have a good weekend.
Oh, you do? All right, we know the.
So, so are you making it to milk first?
Are you ready there?
Yeah. Really, I don't need Jim to call me over, that could be, that could be great. Oh, you never, I didn't plan.
I did, so.
I got, I remember my client, and stuff are here, and I said, girl, and, and.
Well, okay, those would be.
That is not, or.
We.
Yeah. So, they, yeah, somebody wants to.
I don't believe the problem.
So, yeah, right, yeah, things are, like, things, I, like, this.
We have many buildings, and. You're always gonna get a lawyer.
It's for, you know, all record, or to the same one.
Regulate all the things.
Because it's not helpful. Anything with this, uh, happening, some, something to think about.
I don't know, I take you later.
Thank you. You're too.
Okay, how much has, and she, she has sent me the word file, I was wanting to chase some of these things, I had a couple of things that I think everybody wanted to see, and the first thing that I had drafted, uh, or maybe to that, and then I'll send everybody that draft, that looks like somebody else. You know, that might be why not.
We're gonna do it now.
Far, are you hanging out this? Very good, now that. I said, I don't know that's what she said, but she might be.
I don't know that's what she said, but she might be. Everyone's like, oh, of course.
There, I'm, I'm just trying to, I didn't. That's, that's.
Hey, Mike.
That's taking my time away.
Yeah, well, I did have fun yesterday, no, I didn't.
Yeah, me too, I did.
And, and then we have that entertainment from the, the kids.